I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please. President Rudd?
Here.
Pro Tem Ford?
Here.
Councilmember Papacek?
Here.
Councilmember Camperoni?
Here.
Councilmember Lamb? Councilmember Mosher?
Here.
Councilmember Dandalitas?
Here.
You have a quorum. Thank you. We have no presentations today, so item number five, call to the public. Each person wishing to address the village council shall be afforded an opportunity to do so. If you wish to comment, please stand or raise your hand to indicate you wish to speak. When recognized, give your name and address, direct your comments to the chair, and note that comments are limited to four minutes. So I'll open the call to public on non-agenda items. Is there anyone for call to public on non-agenda? Yes.
Thank you, Madam President, members of council. Good evening, everyone. Sorry, I wanted to dress nicer today, but we got new flowers in the main intersection donated by picnics, and they had to be watered, so I chose watering. Just a couple of quick updates on some things that are happening within the community. The restrooms at the fire station, which have been such an awesome benefit for all of us. The cleaning crew, which some of us know as a former police officer here, was on contract with the DDA to keep things cleaned, like those bathrooms and other things throughout downtown. He's had to move on, and so we're kind of in a little bit of a transition. So we're going to try to keep the bathrooms clean, but they're going to be closed for a week or two because we've got to get a new contract for that. So just, we'll post it. Because of that, we're going to keep the porch John that's by the horseshoe, leave it a little bit longer. We're going to talk to Turner about adding another one in that area more closer to the trail, at least while the seasonality of our summer hopefully extends itself a little bit longer. We've had some really great things that have happened within the district. Genesis Bank gave out five grant awards. I'm probably jumping the gun. A good friend from Oakland County is here, he'll probably want to announce this in a different way, but two of our businesses were selected out of the entire county. So only five awards countywide and two of them from here in Orient. Janet Bloom from the DDA was instrumental in helping write the grant applications with those businesses, and they're going to be really instrumental in some of the things that they do. It's the Boutique Chic and the Lake Orient Bike and Adventure Company. So lots of really great things happening. This week, of course, you'll be able to get donuts served by Ms. Rudd's family at the Halloween Extravaganza, thanks to our chief and the great police department that we have. The parade again this year. It looks like weather's going to be pretty good. It's going to be sunny but cool, so we should have hundreds of kids dressed up for Halloween. I think we have more than 40 businesses again, looking at Janet, that are going to be handing out trick-or-treat candy. So this week, be careful for that, a lot of kids running around town. Our downtown looks really beautiful right now. We are working on some other things. Sanchez and I are working on making sure the electric works, and when we put in the holiday lighting and things for the downtown. The lumberyard is a much bigger update, I'd be happy to give that to you. We, again, as myself and Janet, we would love the opportunity, if the council ever wanted to have a specific spot for us on the agenda, that we could have more of an intergauge dialogue about what we're doing and the investments that are happening. We continue to be really open to that, Madam President. So if in the future the agenda were to change, we would come running with those updates and concerns and ideas and different things. And so, a little bit what's happening in your town, and thank you for the time.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Kindred.
Yeah, Donald Kindred. I was curious, I wanted to ask Darwin if he's got any idea when they plan on scheduling the inspection for the void and the water flow under the parking lot over here. I was wondering if he had any idea when that was supposed to be taking place, and if he had spoken to anybody about that. I was also wondering if the police chief had already started training the officers a little bit better on medical marijuana devices, and several other things to go along with that. And I guess I'll have to come up here and speak with Darwin at another time. Have a good day.
Thank you. Anyone else for, yes, for non-agenda items?
Hi. Lee Marriott at 191 Park Island. And just a heads up, I'm just looking for maybe a better explanation to be either posted or an article back in the paper. All of the neighbors had a big group text going on once we received our quarterly water bills. Everybody's in shock. So everybody's looking for an explanation as to why it's such a big increase. So if we could address that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Seeing done, I will close the call to public. Item number six, approval of the agenda. Wherever the president no matters will be discussed after 9:30 unless the council votes to continue the meeting. Council. Well, I'll move to approve the agenda as presented. We have a motion, we have support, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven, consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are approved by one vote. Council. Mr. Lamb?
Um, I'd like to remove items K, M, and N for consideration on the regular agenda, please.
We have items K, M, and N. Any others?
I'd like L for me, please.
L? Anything else? All right, I will move to approve the consent agenda with items K, L, M, and N removed.
Support.
We have a motion and support, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number, or item K, Mr. Lamb?
Thank you, Madam President. The reason I removed item K was I had wanted to discuss with you the way we select board members. And I've got a little new information since I put in this request to you. The Ethics Board and the Village Council position most recently that vacated, we were able to advertise for candidates and then interview them with the board and then make a suitable selection. And so what the question was raised, well, on the DDA Board and the Planning Commission Board and the BDA Board, why do we do the same thing? Why is it burdened upon the president to select someone and advocate them? This also puts the board in an uncomfortable position if they don't really like a candidate or believe a candidate is unqualified, they have to publicly call them out.
Sorry, people.
So there was, so there was some discussion whether we should adopt the formal procedure to make our standard policy to advertise for candidates for all boards. But it was brought to our attention by our clerk, Ms. Stout, that the, for the Planning Commission, the DDA Board and the BCA, the state law is clear that the executive officer has to make a recommendation. So I did do a chat TPT on it, and it suggested that we could have an informal policy where the Village Council president might actually take it upon herself to solicit or encourage the village manager to solicit for board applications and then seek a preliminary review by the council. But it wouldn't, you know, that would be just a local issue, so that's why I brought it off the agenda, so.
Any other comments on this item?
I'd just say, I think it's a good idea. I don't know if we can execute the idea, but I think it's a good idea, particularly when I think about the Planning Commission. We've had an opening on the Planning Commission for some time. I think, you know, to advertise for that and try and seek qualified candidates, I think it makes a lot of sense.
Oh, I have a great idea. Then I, I'll make a motion to request the Village Council president to formally advertise for candidates for the Planning Commission, since they're not just coming in. You can do that, but you still get to, you still get to recommend the appointment, but how do we?
Can you define formally advertise? Because it's on our website, vacancies are, you know, how, what would formally, I mean, I can just say here, applications are open. This is my formal appeal to, to the community to advertise.
Do the newspaper advertisement and the Orient Review. The new Planning Enabling Act changes just indicated that for a community, I believe for a community our size, we can get members outside of the community to be on our Planning Commission Board. They don't have to be residents of the village anymore, up to three members. I believe, I'm not, the law's not posted yet, it's legal but it's not posted. I believe up to three members of the Planning Commission could come from outside our community, so maybe it would behooves to put an advertisement out beyond our website.
I mean, I'm happy to have us, direct administration, to put an advertisement for our Planning Commission vacancy in the Orient Review, but I don't know that I personally need to do something outside. I think this council can just-
No, it's your, no, it's your authority, so we can-
It is my authority to recommend somebody, but I would be happy to ask the administration to advertise for that position.
Okay, is that good enough for you, Darwin, an informal, thank you so much, Trina.
That item, item K, is the reappointment of Debbie Burgess and Hank Laurent to four-year terms on the DDA, the DDA Board to expire October 31st, 2029. And I'm going to make the motion to reappoint Debbie and Hank to those four-year terms as is written.
Support.
And I just wanted to say, you know, our chair, Debbie Burgess is our current chairperson of the board, and she has spent, I don't even know how many hours, hundreds of hours working on DDA things. So our DDA Board is a working board. It means they chair committees, they are out volunteering, they are, you know, doing a lot of things. There are other DDAs that are not working boards. They come, they vote, they go home. And I just want to thank our DDA Board for all the time that they do put in. Like I said, chairing committees, being involved in the community. And then Hank, he is also up as well. He just finished his first term on the DDA Board, and he brings a lot of knowledge to our board as well. So Debbie fills a property interest role, so five members on our DDA Board have to have interest in downtown property, and she's the owner, Builders Custom Flooring. One has to be a resident of the DDA District, and Hank is, and he also serves on our Planning Commission. He's involved in the Art Center, and so he brings a wealth of experience and knowledge as well to our board. So just want to thank them for their service to our community and looking forward to continuing to work with them. So we have a motion and support, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Nay.
So five to two, motion carries. Item L, Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, fiscal year 2026, 2027, capital improvement projects, request, Mr. Dandalitas?
So we, really at the request of the village manager and council during our budget discussions last year, I guess it was this year, actually, we were requested to, the Parks and Rec Committee was requested to submit to council in the October timeframe what our priority projects would be for the upcoming budget year. And so in our last meeting, we did that. We've established our three priorities for inclusion in the budget and then the dollars that are available at our discretion, we included that also, the three priority items that we'd like to pursue with those dollars. And I wanted to offer our chairman, Rosemary Ford, the opportunity to speak to that and perhaps answer any questions that anybody would have, or, I don't know, is Rosemary in the room?
She's hiding.
Not hiding, these lecterns are too tall. I'm Rosemary Ford, live at 225 North Broadway. I am the chairperson of the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee, and you probably have before you the letter, excuse me, that we sent to Darwin to pass on to the council as to what we're looking at, as you had requested that we have this in before you begin your budgetary talks in the winter. And the first one, as you have already discussed at length, but it's Atwater Park. We really feel this is important because we've looked into it. The basketball court, as has been mentioned before, is in disrepair, and while the cost came in higher than what we anticipated, it was due to the engineering costs, but we feel it important that we have those engineering costs and not bypass them, because this is gonna, as the letter states, enable the longevity of it. If we cut corners, then we're going to be right back here before we know it. So let us do something and do it right. And that is, of the village parks, there's only one other park that has a basketball, well, Swiss Village, but there's really is very small, Greens Park, but this is the main one that's used, is the one on Atwater Park. In our request, because this has gone over as far as dimensions, we want 68 by 50. I know that one of the quotes came in at 84, I think by 50, and that was off base. The other one was much smaller than that. The size we're looking at is more like a middle school, junior high size court. The next thing on our planning is Greens Park's pavilion for your perusal, and again, we're coming back with, we would like to have a pavilion down at Greens Park. I think it would make a world of difference, it would benefit the community. We would be able to have various functions, as you saw written on there. We'd be able to have graduation parties, family reunions, birthday parties, even weddings, whatever it is, but we could rent it out. Now, a lot of you were not on that council, but a couple of years ago, the council came to us and said, well, we'd like to see you come to us with ways that you can bring revenue to your parks, because our budget, as you know, is small. So this is the way we thought of, but we have not been able to have the means to come up with these monies. So if you would take a look at that, at the time, it was between 40 and 60,000. The 40,000 was for the actual pavilion itself. When it came to 60,000, that's because 20,000 was thrown in. It may not cost that, but we went high because we're going to have a cement concrete base for the flooring. But as you can see, we're looking at having fabricated powder coatings, 24-gauge metal roofing, and the reason we looked at this is because we looked at wood ones, but then we thought, because it's right there by the lake in the elements, it would wear down much faster. So if we go with the appropriate materials, this could last a long, long time. And the third thing is the Greens Park sprinkler system. Greens Park used to have a pump station, hasn't been active for years and years and years. The lawn is bad, but we're hoping that we could get one back. One, to make the lawn and enhance the beauty of that park because it's got such potential. And the other is, is we're hoping that, our hopes would that be help control the geese because they wouldn't care for those sprinklers going off possibly twice a day. Now, we had put an estimate on there of 15,000. I know Mr. Sanchez had looked into it earlier this year, and he had gotten his first quote, just perusing and having somebody come out, was 8,400. So we thought, well, better off to go this way, because as we understand, when you're looking into things, you've got to take three bids. So that's what we did. And then the rest of the letter includes what our planning is, because that's capital improvements. I might be saying this backwards. Oh. Time's up.
Time's up, everybody gets four minutes.
Okay. Well, you've got the rest of my letter there, so you can see what it is we're looking to do with our funds. So I thank you, and does anybody have any questions? Mr. Lamb?
Hi, Rosemary.
Hello.
Didn't I just see you on a trail the other day?
And that you did, yes.
And that wasn't your dog?
No, and it was not my dog.
It wasn't your dog. I've been looking over this list, we've been working on the, on the basketball court, and I think we've got the cost maybe down a little bit, and there's some confusion over the size, and then recently I heard, just build whatever will fit in the space. So the-
I don't know where the, whatever fills in that space came from.
The basketball court, I mean, if it's not exactly regulation size, do the kids care? I'm saying, so there's all this talk, I'm saying it's not-
But it's not always kids, a lot of times there's adult males there, so they might get particular.
Size does matter to you, then?
And that it does. And we did, we went over this in depth because you had asked us to, and you asked to have all of this in by October, and there were, I think there was some confusion because there were some different measurements, but we looked back in our records, and then we looked it up again, and we said, no, 68 by 50 is what we had deemed the size that we would like for Atwater Park.
So that's the final number, 68?
Yes, 68 by 50.
Okay, Greens Park Pavilion, so recently I spoke to the Mosherys about assisting us maybe with this, with the, during their approval process, they've often mentioned they're welcome, they come to the community, and it's okay for us to ask them first to involve them.
Right.
They like to do that, so I didn't feel out of character, out of place to do that. So I asked them about helping with the steeple project or what we might do, blah, blah, blah. And most recently, their comment was they would be more interested in participating in something in the park, in the, in Greens Park.
Right, I can understand that because in the future, they're going to have apartments overlooking that park.
So I previously encouraged the Parks Commission, you know, since you are a committee, to reach out to them and, and see if there's some collaboration, you know, they have yet to have a final site plan for the marina, and that's going to be a lot of money and a lot of work. So, and we own property, you know, we own the docks in front of their property, et cetera, et cetera. So I, I, I'm just going to once again recommend that you go and speak with them. I can give you their phone number if you like.
That is a possibility, I can probably, if you want to, that'd be fine, I can go back in my records because I know at one time, we dealt with Dominic, the younger Dominic, so I don't know if that's a Dominic Junior?
No, it's, it's a Dominic the Net.
I know, there's three Dominics. You can't forget the name, right? But I'd be happy to do that, but in saying that, I understand that, but we can't bank on that. So as mentioned before, last year, the council said, due to our budget, you would be willing to support us in projects that we have, and because of our budget, this is a larger one, which would require more funds, so we came forth with it. We're not going to bank on it. There might be a possibility, or maybe they would contribute to it, I'd be happy to do that.
Please, please start the dialogue, I think it will be rewarding. As far as the sprinkler system goes, you know, we have a lot of problems with water in the village, okay? And, you know, paying for a sprinkler system, I do agree with you that the sprinklers, I have something called a goosebuster, and it's a motion-activated lawn sprinkler that I have out, and the geese hate it, okay? So your, your assumption that the sprinklers would help drive the geese away is great. I'm seeing that that's low on my priority list is, is sprinklers, but-
I understand what you're saying, but again, you had come to us and said, give us a list of what you want, and we have a number of things, and so we, we talked it all out the last meeting and went through and said, okay, what is everybody's request? And we whittled it down to these top three, because we want to enhance-
I was, I'm not criticizing, I was just kind of trying to-
Right, you're just saying, you personally, it's not on the top of your list.
Yeah.
I understand that.
And then the docks, the public docks thing's, my understanding is that's, it's a maintenance nightmare. The docks are fragile, the boats are large, I'm not sure we should even be in the dock business, so I would keep that as a lower priority item also.
Well- Okay, so in, in, in the Parks and Rec defense, okay, we were asked for our top three priorities, and, and those are our three priorities to be considered for the budget for next year. Relative to the docks, that's coming out of the discretionary dollars that the council has provided to the Parks and Rec Committee to, to, to put where, where the Parks and Rec Committee thinks they should be, okay? So I recognize-
Just giving you some airtime, George, I, I'm almost supportive of the entire proposal, I was just trying to help Rosemary get a little direction on what she could accomplish tomorrow. So I'm, I'm good with all this, this is perfect.
Well, Mr. Lamb, I do have three people on the Parks and Rec that all live on the lake, they all have passes, actually, there's four. I'm the lone village people, is actually living in the village, everybody else lives on the lake. And so those were put in by the DDA, and we feel that if people want to utilize them, we want them to feel safe when they're there, so we need to have those items there. And if we have to take it out of our budget for now, as opposed to the monies that they collect towards that type of thing, so be it. But as of this time, we, because it's rolled over from last year to this year, we have a little over $12,000. We'd like to do, do something so that we can show the community, may not be big-ticket items, but we're doing something in that they can visually see. And that's why, again, we're asking for the basketball court at Atwater currently, we are asking to look at the pavilion, and then we're asking for consideration also on the sprinkler system, so we can enhance Greens Park. So thank you so very much. Appreciate your time.
Thanks, Rosemary.
Thank you.
I'm hope to receive the request from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee for consideration for funding for fiscal year 26, 27, capital improvement projects, and consider the same as part of the fiscal year 26, 27 budget preparation process.
Support.
We have a motion, we have support, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item M, request from Councilmember Lamb for revision to council rules of procedure. Mr. Lamb?
I thank you, Madam President, the, M, sorry, M. The, um, N, sorry, M. Recently, back in 2023, the rule councils, the council rules were changed to prohibit village council members from contacting the village attorney. And then they allowed for the village council president and the pro temp to have access to the village attorney. During the course of the years, I have saw my own council, and I have my own attorneys, and so it's not necessary for me to have access to the village attorney. You know, I felt that some of the newer council members, who are uncertain in their roles, may occasionally want to ask. So I inquired as to why the rule was changed, and it appears to me, the answer was that it saved money, because the village council was talking to the village attorney too much. So today, I went and got the entire year's attorney bills for the year '22 to '23, and I note that there's no evidence that the rule change had any effect on the attorney billings whatsoever. What it indeed showed was the reason our attorney bills were cut in half was because Darwin McCleary answered the councilman's questions and was able to respond on legal issues because of his large expertise and past experience. And so basically, there was no reason for anyone to contact the village attorney. That being said, I believe it is the right and the due of the village council members to have access to council. Most recently, I was spanked, slapped on the wrist, criticized for a violation, a potential violation of the Open Meetings Act. If I had had the ability to send a brief email to the village attorney and say, can I send this out to the other council people? And she would have responded, no, immediately. And, you know, that would have been, what, a five-minute consultation, and it cost the village a couple bucks. Instead, I think she spent 15, 20 minutes writing, you know, an email, counseling everyone about the Open Meetings Act. So I think we need to remove that rule, that provision from our rules, and go back to the old way that it was for 40 years, that the village council could call the attorney if there was a question. My understanding is, is a council person's not going to call and ask the attorney for an opinion on the DDA or some big issue like that. It would just be a simple courtesy call for something they didn't understand on the issue, maybe something they didn't want to talk to the village manager about, because they were at odds with him and wanted to seek professional and legal counsel. That is the purpose and the reason why. Why it was changed, I think it was a political issue by people that are no longer here. But that being said aside, let's just move forward, and I would like to make a motion to remove that change and take our rules back to their original format.
We have a motion, we have support?
Support.
Counsel, any other comments? Mr. Ford?
Yeah, I would prefer to keep it the way it is. If, in fact, it saves money or not, that's okay, but I don't see, I think the process would be for the, if we had a question, the village council would make a motion to have Darwin approach the attorney, rather than each one of us having that potential to do. I think that they're going to spend too much time with that. If we need an attorney's opinion, then I think we make a motion, and we agree on council that that's what we do, and to give Darwin that direction.
Ms. Papek?
Yeah. The way I'm seeing it, my understanding is, president and president pro temp have that direct line of access. It, to me, coming into it a little bit fresh, feels like a two-tiered system. Some people can have direct access, some people can't. Not to say it's right or wrong, it is what it is, but I like equal access if I have a question. And I don't like necessarily sort of the gatekeeper role. It's okay, I understand the need to contain costs, but to the point of simple questions, being able to approach directly as someone learning and appreciating an expert opinion, it would be nice to have equal access to do that and not have to take up time trying to get everyone to vote on whether I can ask my question or not.
Mr. Anadita?
So from my perspective, I would actually go the other way. My thought would be that, similar to what Stan said, if we have something that we're looking to get council's opinion on, that we would agree that that was needed, and that was the right place to spend attorney money, and that we would give that direction to the village manager. That makes perfectly good sense to me. I think that's a, I think that's a very rational way to handle it. Relative to the president and the pro temp, I would further restrict their access to council from the perspective of, if there were something to do with either performance or contractual issues with the village manager or the staff, that that would be a reason for the president to go directly to council. But outside of that, I still think that if we've got, if we've got a legal question, I think that we, as a council, ought to give that direction, agree that that's where we want to go, and then ask the village manager to be the single point contact. I think the risk that we run by allowing anyone access, not that this would necessarily happen, but if I have a particular crusade that I'm on, nothing would prevent me from accessing the attorney, and not necessarily to the benefit of the whole council, let's say. Okay? So I really think it makes sense to have kind of a consensus, give that direction to the village manager outside of the specifics of a performance or contractual issue.
The Michigan Municipal League, their handbook for villages, states that the council needs to establish a policy for contacting the attorney, and that a common practice is only specific officials may contact the attorney without consent authorization. For instance, president, or manager, or clerk, if there's no manager, should make the contact. And so that's on the Michigan Municipal League website, that they recommend restricted access. In the background brief, it says, you know, it's a violation of the charter. The charter, it is, the charter allows us to make our own rules of procedure. So it does allow for us to do that. And there is a case to be made for restricted access. It protects and preserves attorney-client privileged communications. When many people are allowed to query, seek legal advice, since that's the purpose of contact, the attorney, it allows then, it allows for the compromise of attorney-client privileged communication. And also inconsistent directives. There's a clear chain of command. So the way our rules are written is that the president or pro temp can initiate contact insofar as their duties for the council are concerned. And that, in my thought process, that is, if I have a parliamentary procedure question, our village attorney is our parliamentarian. So if I have a parliamentary procedure question, because my duty as the president to the council is to run this meeting and to preside over the meetings. And so my duty to the council, then, is to make sure I do that accurately. So that is the only reason that I'm going to be contacting the village attorney, as our rules are written, is for parliamentary procedure questions. And so having a chain of command where everything goes through the village manager, unless it's a council directive, it can also put an attorney in an ethical dilemma. What if they have a council member contacting them for something that they feel personally passionate about, that is against the majority, or against the minority, or against, you know, other professional recommendations? It can put them into an ethical dilemma. It also maintains a consistent record. If we have council members, say, if I decide to start calling the village attorney all the time, I might say in a council meeting, well, the attorney said, or, you know, I talked with the attorney, but where's the actual record of that? It just becomes an inconsistent record there. And it also, the efficiency and use of resources. You know, the, yes, it can prevent redundant or extra costs, and our charter is clear that the village council as a whole is the client, not individual council members. So the policy was adopted for a reason, and to go back to just unfettered access, I think, is a move against transparency, it's a move against fiscal responsibility, and I think it also opens the council to increased liability. The way it's written, it's very restricted as to what the president and president pro temp can access the attorney for, and I would be against opening it up for any council member just to have access to query the village attorney without the consent of the council. Ms. Papek?
I guess I read it a little differently. My interpretation of it was, the ethical duty of the village attorney is to represent the village as a whole, not the majority of the village, and not just the leadership of the village. So my interpretation was, we should all be able to ask the attorney questions. Difference of opinion, maybe, but that was just as I read it. So they're not hearing just a special faction or subset of the council, they're hearing from all of us.
I agree totally with that. In the past, we, the council has been able to contact the attorney. This changed. I'm not saying that I would ever even contact her, but I think the option, I think it's tying our hands if we cannot, for a quick question, a quick response, to be able to contact her. I don't believe that it's up to the president and president pro temp to make the decisions about the entire council if we have questions. So I'm totally in agreement with Eric and with Michael, that I think we should be able to, if need be, and we're not going to increase, because it, the research shows that it didn't increase when we were, when the council was able to contact the attorney. So I think that's a lame decision, option for a decision, and I feel that it should not be up to just the president and the president pro temp to be the only ones on the council to contact, when I could have an issue and it could be totally misconstrued by these members, when they're talking to the attorney. So, that's my two cents.
Other council comments? Any public comments?
I have another comment.
Yes, Mr. Lamb?
Just to address some of the other comments by council, the village attorney is extremely proficient professional, and of all things about, especially even Mary Kuchar, is that she is professional and she does not render an opinion easily on a matter. So as I mentioned before, that, you know, council access to the attorney has nothing to do with policy issues with the village attorney. The village attorney knows well that policy issues are to be made at the direction of the village manager, or at the direction of the council authority. Okay? The reason you would have access for general questions are because we're ignorant. How many times have I been told, you're not an attorney, Mr. Lamb? I got held in education though. So, but in most cases, we're not attorneys. And then there's all kinds of other issues. There could be perhaps some improprieties on the part of a council person, or on the village staff, that the council members are aware of, that they may want to have an advisor. Or they may see something in the community that they're unaware of, they may need to call out. And the only confidential advisor that any member of the village council has in this community is the village attorney. They're the only ones that's allowed to speak to an individual council member and keep that confidential. Okay, you talked, when you talked about the, you know, attorney protection and attorney client privilege, it's not the invalidation of the attorney, it's the embracing of the attorney client privilege. I can call up and say, you know, I can ask them, I want to do this, and they can tell me yes or no, it's legal or not legal. But I don't want to ask questions like that. I want to ask questions like, is it okay to do this? Can I make this proposal? I'm an active policymaking council person, so I have a lot of proposals and ideas. And how many times I've had staff, just recently as today, tell me that it's not legal, or it can't be done? That's so grateful to you for saving me, saving them from a half an hour of discourse on my part, okay? So I think it's important. I think that's why it's set up that way. I don't know why they changed it, okay? Nothing bad's going to happen. Nobody's going to, like, call the village attorney and have them do work for us, okay? That's, it's just not happening. The village attorney won't let that happen. So I think it's appropriate, and it's just one of the things on the list, you know, nippy list of keeping our protocol and policies in order that I had for you all.
So my second comment would be that doing work for us, anytime you call an attorney, they're doing work for you. Every time you call an attorney, it's a bill, it's doing work for you, and if it's not on behalf of the council as a whole, then it's doing work for an individual. And the whole council is the client, not an individual. And I don't want anybody to think, like, oh, she's, you know, going and contacting the attorney for this reason or that reason. It's transparent, it's open, when the president and president pro temp are already restricted via our rules on, we can only contact in matters related to the council. It's not going to be a policy issue that we're going to and forming an argument for. It's only in how we relate to this council. Again, in my mind, that's parliamentary procedure, how we conduct the meetings here. And I don't want to vote for something that decreases public trust, that decreases transparency, that decreases the fiscal interest of the village, and potentially increases liability for the village. You've already had your two comments. I'm going to hold this to the rules. Are there public comments?
I'm going to ask that the village council allow me one. The president allow me one more comment?
I'm going to...
Because I want to refute one of your facts.
Because...
You know, you've just compromised yourself, and you've made a statement...
I have not compromised myself.
Yes, you have. I will give you the specific example, and if you want to defend yourself, that's fine. I think I'm entitled to that.
You have had your two comments, and I'm going to hold it to it. So are there public comments?
With the Sorewski, when you contacted the village attorney without my permission and without the permission of the council...
I never contacted the village attorney.
You called him about Sorewski?
No, I did not.
Hi. Yes. Lee Marriott, 191 Park Island, again. So my understanding would be, it would be almost the same as, I'm assuming everybody's had a family member in the hospital. And when there's a doctor there, and you have 10 people coming in to see this person in the hospital, they all have questions. So it's been my experience that the doctor always wants to have a patient advocate. So he's not asked the same question multiple times, so he has one person that he goes to that is in charge of that patient's care. This situation seems very similar.
Thank you. Other public comments?
Hi, Scott Farnell, 553 Bagley Street. I've been listening very carefully, and the thing that really rings true in this instance is exactly what the woman that was just up here said. It's really like asking a question like, what's the worst that could possibly happen? Which is right before everything falls apart, or huge problems arise. If everybody, if everybody on council, like you said, if there's one person that's just going to, you know, they're going to keep asking the questions, all of a sudden, the bill starts going up, and who knows where it could really lead? It's really best to have a single point of contact. It's the only way to run things. Otherwise, you just have chaos.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments? Yes, Ms. Ford?
My understanding is that, as president and president pro temp, the only time you contact the attorney, and I have been to these meetings, is when the council as a whole has a question that cannot be answered here. The other thing is, and maybe I'm, I know there's some attorneys in the room, but I'm speaking from when I worked, the corporation I worked for, every time you called an attorney, and if you were all given free will to call that attorney, when you call, and you say, and you get the bill, and you're like, why is it this much? I only talked to him for five minutes. If you talk to him for five minutes, they bill you quarter of an hour, and that adds up. As I recall, because as I said, I've been coming to these, a couple of years ago, we had an issue with trying to save monies. The attorneys were here at every meeting, and they were trying to save cost. So it was determined not to have the attorney here to save monies unless we absolutely needed them here. So I guess I would urge you all to think about... So I guess I would urge you all to think about that because we're trying to keep things rolling here and this seems that if we approve this and anybody at will is allowed to call them, then our bill could skyrocket. So I just think you should heed that. Thank you.
Other public comment? Seeing none, we have a motion and support. So we have a motion to, I'll make sure I get it correct. A motion to amend the village rules of procedure to allow for any council member to contact the village attorney. And I'll take roll call now, please.
That's not the correct motion, you're.
Okay, then could you please restate it correctly?
The motion was to remove the paragraph from existing rules.
I stand corrected.
Not to give anybody access.
Okay. I stand corrected.
So basically, yeah, we're not asking to grant everyone asking, we're asking to remove the provision preventing.
Okay.
It's a very different animal in my little legal world.
Thank you. So roll call, please. Councilmember Papacek?
Support.
Councilmember Rocher?
Support.
Councilmember Camperoni?
No.
President Rudd?
No.
Councilmember Dandy Litas?
No.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Pro Tem Ford?
No.
Four to three. Motion fails. Thank you. Item N, request from Councilmember Lamb to provide payment of DDA bonds from general obligation pledge to terminate DDA tax increment financing plan. Mr. Lamb?
Thank you, Madam President. The, the agenda item is gonna be removed. Pages 135 through, pages 135 through 139 are, I'm gonna remove those. So finally today, after many, many months of, of calling, I heard from my bound, bond counsel and I heard, and Darwin just gave us, from his bond counsel, so bond counsel says that the, that the DDA bonds have to be paid from TIP revenues. That's their opinion, so that's good. That means that the tax increment finance capture, to the extent of paying the bonds has to remain in place. So that means removing the TIP in its entirety is not allowed. So that's off the table. The next option on the table, as you know, we've been discussing, the downtown district and the tax capture. I've made numerous presentations regarding this and you're all very well aware of it. So the next item, the village managers informed us that the only oversight we have over the Downtown Development Authority is through control of the downtown district boundaries and through the approval of their budget. So basically that says that the, the village council has no authority to dictate to the DDA what they do, other than to control their tax captured district, the downtown district, which, the downtown district is not necessarily a tax captured district, it could just be the downtown district that the DDA has authority over. The second order is the TIP is created based on the downtown district and is dependent upon it. It's a dependent situation. So the other, you know, the, you've seen what the, trying to do anything with the DDA budget was this year. This year, we weren't able to gain any ground. We were told by the DDA director that we didn't have any authority to make any changes or amendments to the, to the DDA budget. We only had the authority to approve it or deny it. So once again, having a happy, warm, fuzzy discussion about the taxpayers' money didn't occur. No fault of mine. I'm always there, ready to talk. So the only option left to talk about the surplus funds, the growing development funds and whatnot, is to discuss the amendment to the downtown district. So I'm gonna make a motion to have a special meeting of the village council to discuss amending the downtown district. So as I make that motion, I'm gonna bring it to your attention that a village councilman can request such a special meeting just by having two council people request that. I'm sure that that can happen. So by asking the council to approve it in a motion form, I'm merely looking to see your willingness to discuss an issue that's very, very valuable to the community, especially with the citizens here now about the water bills and the sewer bills. So that's my motion.
Do we have support?
Support.
We have motion support. Mr. Ford?
I don't think it's in the right order here. And that he's talking about is the DDA bonds, that's been settled, he's taken it off. This is a whole nother issue. Why are we talking about another issue when, when we're supposed to be following the agenda? That's not on the agenda.
It is in the packet. It's in the packet.
Right here. Provide payment DDA bonds.
Right here in the packet.
And, and it's not part of the agenda.
As a, as a point of, it's not part of the agenda item title, but if you look at the packet, if the public has it up on their phones or an electronic version, it is on packet page 140 and one to 140 down to 145, I think I'm showing. And it was included under that agenda item, even though it's, it probably should have been two separate agenda items because they're two different things, but it was included under one agenda item title. So if you're looking in your packet, the original request and motion was to direct the council, or have the council direct the village manager to take the steps to begin the boundary change process. But this is a different motion that is being brought forward for a special meeting to discuss that.
A special meeting to discuss it.
So just so everybody's on the same page on where you might find that information. Other council comments? Yes. Ms. Dandy Litas?
So it seems to me that we keep coming forward with solutions. Okay, a couple of months ago, we talked about bringing the DDA board under the, the Planning Commission, right? And, and now we're looking at doing boundaries and we're looking at the other things here. I believe that we need to step back, look at where we're at, and identify a problem. And so once we've identified a problem, then I think it would be appropriate to start talking about solutions. But this just looks to me like shooting from the hip with the solution, trying to get something through. And, and I'd like to see a problem first, okay? And quite honestly, if we want to sit down and discuss this in a special meeting, I'd be more than happy to do that as long as we focus first on identifying a problem and as long as we do that collaboratively with the DDA. I have no interest in sitting down as council and trying to figure out what to do about the DDA without the DDA's involvement. I've, I've said it multiple times and I still believe it, we are one happy family, we're all trying to accomplish the same goals. And for, for us to pretend that we can sit down as a council and come up with an ultimate solution, I think is very naive. So I'd be more than happy to sit down and discuss, but I will, I will only support that if we're doing it in conjunction, in collaboration with the DDA.
Other council comments? So I think, for me, obviously, two council members can call a special meeting. So whether or not we vote for this, two council members can call a special meeting. I'm in support of what Mr. Dandy Litas said about in collaboration with the DDA. But here's just where I stand on redrawing the, the district boundaries. Since it's an agenda item, I can comment on that. In 2023, there was a special election of the voters and they voted to affirm the TIP district as it is. Not an amended, not boundaries redrawn, the voters voted to affirm. They voted 57 to 42% on no to removing the TIP districts. So by effect, they're approving that TIP district that they want it to continue by 15% margin. If you redraw those district boundaries, it has a very significant impact on the DDA budget, but also the village budget and the village ability to do infrastructure projects. So many of you are aware of the 2575 infrastructure fund. So 75% of all new revenue is going into an infrastructure fund. I went and looked at our capital improvement project, capital improvement plan, just to see what we could do in the DDA district on infrastructure projects. And it's significant. So things like special event public safety equipment, all of our special events happen in our downtown district. That request is $20,000 each year for four years for a total of $80,000 that would come out of the police fund. The DPW garage building replacement, that would come from a loan. It's in the DDA district. I think you can make an argument that there's public and economic benefit for that. The Children's Park Bridge replacement, $100,000 from the general fund. Even the Atwater basketball court, we're going to consider, $80,000 from the general fund. The Lake Bypass Outfall Structure Improvements, $25,000. The Gate Structure Improvements, $50,000. Crack ceiling on major streets, $15,000. Roads, now that, that's an undetermined amount, but in our capital improvement plan, there's $400,000 coming from major streets over the next five years. They're largely in the, in the DDA district. The village, according to our special assessment policy, is to pay for 50% of those. And that, if you just include the DDA district, $250,000 to $300,000 from, that would come from major streets. Local streets, there's 787,000 program in the CIP over the next five years. If just 15% of those are in the DDA district, that's 118,000 that could come from the infrastructure fund. Sidewalk handicap ramps, if we have that, probably more in the DDA district, $25,000. The water main replacements, we're talking about water sewer bills, right? We have $6.7 million more in water main projects that we still have to do, not including the sewer pumps. If just a third of those are in the DDA district, there could be more, I haven't looked at the maps. That's over $2 million that we no longer have to bond that can be paid for using the infrastructure account. Manhole repairs, I could go on. There's somewhere between, in the next five years, programmed in the CIP, $3.8 to $5 million that we can use from that 75% in the, in the infrastructure fund on infrastructure projects, which does free up money for other things. You know, I'm not an engineer, I'm not an accountant, but I did win the eighth grade math competition. So I'm okay at numbers. So we have, if we eliminate, if, if we reduce the TIP district, it decreases the amount available that we have for those infrastructure projects. We get a 25% bonus essentially to the village by having that infrastructure account. I've never gotten a 25% bonus at work. I don't think we've ever gotten a 25% bonus from the federal government or state just for being here. So those, I'm, I'm going to vote no on it, even though I know we're going to have a special meeting, because I have no interest in entertaining something that the village voted to affirm two years ago. Our constituents that we chose, that we represent voted to affirm that. So we'll have the meeting because we can, but I have no interest in entertaining that at this point. Five years from now, if we have all the infrastructure projects done because we just got so much cash, great, let's entertain that. But for now, let's move forward and get projects done together. Please, no applause, no applause. Thank you.
I'm supposed to take the gavel and smack it on the wood. That was a great blathering, but none of it made any sense. I don't live in the DDA district.
I live here.
I don't live in the DDA district and I don't own a business that benefits from the DDA funds. Okay, I live on the lake and that's all great. The problem is, there was a lady here earlier that said something about why her water bill went up and what are we gonna do about it? Okay? And I guess all the meaningless presentations that I give you guys with the facts and the charts and the figures are lost in the drama of whatever you're involved in, because I don't really understand any of it. The, the purpose here is to properly utilize the village people's money. So if the DDA TIP plan calls for them to get a certain amount of money, they get a certain amount of money. Why can't the village residents get the rest of it? As far as the DDA funds being used, they can only be used in the DDA district. Most of the streets and the sewers and the pump stations are all in the islands. Please, give me a break. Okay? The excess DDA revenues could be used to fund the next set of sewer bonds, like you said, the next set of water bonds. But the problem is, the money can't be used, the excess DDA money, not their TIP, $1 million a year and their 20-year plan, the number of the money, doesn't say they're supposed to get $2 million five years from now. It says they're supposed to get 1,100 or a million, according to their guestimate plan, which isn't very detailed. Okay? I defy any of you to bring me any facts, because in five years, I've never seen a fact or a number or any contrary to any of the facts I presented. Even the pie charts are not understood. Give you a pie chart, okay, they're facts. So what I've asked you to discuss is whether the district should be revised so that the excess revenues that the DDA doesn't need or aren't in their TIP plan can be used by the whole village. It's a reasonable request. It's not any crazy idea. It's extremely reasonable to request. I've showed you that there is no vehicle for having discussions of taking the DDA's money away from them with them. We're the executive branch of government. It is up for us to decide as a council what to do with the village taxpayers' dollars. We have already decided that the DDA, you approved their TIP, Teresa. Okay? So that was already decided by you. So at this point, I don't think they need to get another $1 million a year. And those projections are really accurate. Okay? So what excuses are you making to me that they should have a $1 million a year in excess of their TIP? Because you love the DDA? That's all I've ever heard. And as far as the election goes, it was, the election was by Mr. Stevens circulated a petition, it was to kill the TIP. I believe it was 200 to 100 in stormy weather. Okay, 200 residents, big DDA, save the DDA. All right? It was 200 to 100. That was the voter count. And unfortunately, there weren't any signs, so we didn't get to spend any money. So Harry didn't have any money to put big banners across the, of the street. Okay? Didn't have the money. 200 to 100. So anyway, my request is simple. The problem is, there's $20 million of infrastructure debt. The problem is that none of the village council has proposed any solutions to that matter. All they do is ask for other people to propose solutions and the other people keep telling them that it's up to you to provide a solution. So I got elected, I got free time, I've looked at the entire village intensely. The only other solution is for all the village residents here to pay higher taxes. Okay? That's the only solution. Thank you.
Mr. Papacek?
Yeah, I think what we're talking about and what we have to keep in mind up here is that we have a fiduciary duty to the entire village, right? North Shore, Central, all of it, Bellevue. Nobody sees it. I, I don't like getting distracted about whether people like the DDA. Everyone likes the DDA. Everyone wants a vibrant downtown. That's a, we have to figure out the fiduciary responsibilities, what's needed in the CIP beyond just the downtown core. And those are the questions I have. Are we right-sized from a map that was created 40 years ago? I think it's a conversation worth having to see if we're optimized in that balance, because I think there's enough to make everybody happy. I hope there's a solution there, but I think we have to look at what is happening to the areas outside of the DDA that are still in our village. We've got a, we can't ignore that or underrepresent the needs that are there with infrastructure. So I, I'd like to have the conversation. It's my understanding and reading about what other downtown areas do. I've heard of best practices in Charlevois and Petoskey as just a, look at the map every 10 years. Does it make sense for the needs right now of the right balance between downtown and outside of downtown, right? It's, I, I don't see a lot of blight in downtown, which is great. My understanding is it's come a long way in the last 40, maybe even 10 or 15 years. So the question to me is then, does that balance in the size of the map also need to be slightly adjusted? It's not, it's not going anywhere or disappearing, right? I, I think it's just a matter of the, like I said, a right sizing and a proportionality. And I think seeing all the DDA people and working with them together, it seems like there would be a reasonable solution we could come to.
Mr. Dandy Litas?
So, so first thing I would say is, I am quite capable of understanding the pie charts and I have looked at them and I do understand them. I also understand the numbers. I've run similar numbers and I come up with some different things. And perhaps it's, maybe there are some things you're considering. maybe there are some things you're considering or you're not considering, or vice versa on my part. I'm not opposed to another amendment. We've had four amendments now to the TIF. I'm not opposed to another amendment. I'm not opposed to exploring different boundaries of the DDA district. What I am opposed to is doing that in such a way that doesn't, it doesn't look at the big picture, it doesn't take into account the needs of the DDA and the needs of the village necessarily, and I think we need to do that. I think we need to understand what are, what are our mutual needs, what are our mutual goals, and how do we accomplish those? How do we execute those in a, in a positive manner over the next several years? And I think the discussion will be good, I think, but the discussion has got to include the DDA. We, in my opinion, we can't, we can't go off in a vacuum someplace and do that as a council and come back with an optimal solution.
Teresa, does she have two seconds?
Yes. My second comment would be, you know, there's often an argument made that the non-DDA district properties subsidize services for the DDA district properties. With that logic, though, I, my sewer bills subsidize the lift stations, because I can't hook up my sprinkler system to a lake. So that means when my water goes out, I pay the sewer costs for that water. I can't hook it up, my sprinklers up to a lake, and water my lawn from that place and avoid paying water and sewer charges. So I pay my water charge, but we don't allow for a reduction in your bill because you use an automatic sprinkler system. So I'm subsidizing lift stations. The point is, we're all interconnected. Sometimes we will benefit somebody else, sometimes you'll benefit me. We're all interconnected, these things happen. We also, when we think about, like, there's an argument about right sizing the district. The fact that the district is larger is actually to our benefit. When we think about the, both the extra money, when we, when we talk about $1 million for the DDA, 750,000 of that goes towards public infrastructure. Without the, we shrink the DDA district down to just kind of a core, now you've only got maybe 500,000. I'm getting, we're getting an extra $1 million every four years at that point, when the DDA valuation goes up that high, towards infrastructure projects like water mains. Or thinking, I don't, we don't have $787,000 sitting on our local streets funds for the next five years. If just 15% of local streets are in the DDA district, that's 118,000. You take 118,000 and apply it towards, maybe our DDA road is a top priority district road, but the next one is outside the district. Well, now the infrastructure fund just paid for the village's obligation on that road, and the next one, which is outside of the district, has local street dollars left to be able to pay for that road. When we free up general fund dollars, we can apply them towards other major infrastructure needs. And so when we talk about solutions, this is a solution, and going through the CIP and logically going through that and finding all those projects, that those, the extra dollars that we gain in infrastructure to capitalize on those, to meet the infrastructure needs, thus reducing the tax burden for our residents, when we talk about potential over four years, $1 million leaving our community, that's $1 million that then potentially gets shifted to our constituents, to the people of the village, not just the DDA district people, everybody. But because we can capitalize on that, we actually can reduce the burden on the taxpayers. And those are the conversations I also want to have with the DDA. How do we prioritize this money? How do we prioritize, as a village and a DDA together, which ones are going to have the greatest impact on our village residents, to reduce water bills, to reduce burdens? Yes, the sewer lift stations are outside of the DDA district. We can't do those. But again, we have 1.7, or 6.7 millions of water mains that still need to be done. If you don't think those won't have an impact on your water bill, well, you all saw the last one. Those improvement costs money, and we have 3,000 residents to spread those costs around. So those are solutions that we have worked hard to come up with and move forward, and I think those are solutions worth considering. And if in a few years, like I said, we've completed them all, great, let's think about, you know, maybe right sizing at that point, but we have enough projects that we can accomplish and do that will free up money for other things using the plan that we currently have. Ms. Moser.
So I guess this whole discussion with the DDA business and the monies has always been interesting to me, because the DDA is important, I get it. I don't want to get rid of the DDA, but I feel that we, as a council, do have a fiduciary duty to the entire village, that if distributing the money to make it fair for the rest of the village community, not just the DDA district, if there's a way that we can look at taking some of the money and dissipating it so that it's not, it doesn't all go to the DDA, so that the other people can benefit. The water bills, the sewer bills, we haven't even gotten into the rest of the infrastructure that nothing has been done for 20 years. If there's a way to still keep the DDA financially successful, but to then dissipate some of that money to the other village people, because we're all paying taxes, and I think that, you know, we are all subsidizing the pump stations. We don't use, we have sewers, so in my household, we don't use the pump stations. But we are doing this because we, because we're a village, and we are helping these island people with the pump stations. What I see is that the DDA has blinders on, and they don't want to ever look outside of the box. This is the way it's been, we want the money, this is it, you're not going to take the money, and it's ridiculous. It's like sheer and sheer alike. We are all in financial chaos right now, especially with all of these, with the water prices going up. Ours just went up $200,000, from 400 to 600. It's going to keep going up. We don't even have the roads or the sidewalks or any of that yet. So it's like, to want to be in your little box, living in this little box of, well, this is what we've had, and this is the way it should be, and we're not going to change, doggone it, we're going to stay in this position, we want the money. I think it's selfish, and I think you have to look at the village as a whole, and if there's some of the money that can stay in the DDA and some of it that can be taken out to the other village members and residents, like I said, blinders on. Look at the big picture here, people, and realize that it's not all about the DDA. The rest of us have roads, we have sewers, we have all of these other things going on. Stop being so selfish, honestly.
Any other council comments?
Just one.
Yes.
Sorry. I think, you know, looking at it and doing a little bit of reading, I go around and I look at other DDA maps, and I think that's, that's where we're getting at here. Ours is substantial. I haven't been able to find one that captures as big of an area of a city. And from what I saw from the Michigan Treasury in 2022 guidance, they cautioned that as oversized boundaries as being red flags. Not saying it's right or wrong, just saying, again, I think we need to take a look. It signals what they said, improper financial imbalance, and I think that's where we're getting at. We just want to find the right balance. It diverts a lot of funds from the general fund that might not align with downtown revitalization. That's, that's it. But I, you know, again, to the point, I think it's worth the discussion to make sure that we're not shortchanging some of those other infrastructure needs outside of the core.
Any council who hasn't, have you already had your second comment? I think, I think so. I think you have. I will open it for public comment. Remember, public comment is limited to four minutes, and we are talking about the downtown district boundaries. The motion is to create a special meeting, but since we've talked about the merits up here of the downtown district boundaries, that is what this discussion is limited to. Yes. Mr. Davis.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am an attorney representing the Downtown Development Authority and have been for years. I live in Macomb County, and when my colleagues say they have to go to a soccer game in Lake Orion, they come back and they just glow, and I'm so happy for what I hear from them. It's a wonderful community, you've done wonderful things. I was in the room when the 75-25 idea gave birth. It was a DDA meeting, and that concept that the village council was looking to have a little more of the money to go to infrastructure as opposed to other things. I was in the room when that was born. I was the one who wrote the resolutions. We did cross-resolutions to support that effort. The only reason I bring that up is that there are creative things that you guys could do together with the DDA, and I wholeheartedly agree, you can't look at this in a vacuum. That was one of the most creative things I've ever done with the DDA, was to create that dedicated funding mechanism to go towards infrastructure. And that was very unique, haven't seen it since, and I doubt I'll see it in the future. It was very, very well thought out. But it showed that the DDA, sitting in its room and its meeting with me as their attorney, we were willing to listen to the overtures we were getting about infrastructure, and we reacted. And now it's working, and it's going to work well on your capital improvement plans. So representing the DDA, I can assure you, as I'm standing here, that we will come to meetings, we will work together with the village council to look at these ideas and these concepts, and we're willing to do that, just like we were on the infrastructure issue. If you want, if you want to go down this amendment road, it's all governed by statute. Read the law, it tells you exactly how you can and cannot do it. But I don't know if that's your answer, because on one hand, you're saying you want the money that the DDA has to benefit more people, and then you're saying, okay, let's shrink the potential people. It makes no sense. You're, if you want to spread the money around, expand the district. You're talking about shrinking something, at the same time, you're saying, we need to give it to the people who aren't in the district. You hit it right on the head when you said, it's better that the district is this big. It's not necessarily, the district is not always the same as the TIF, but the TIF services the district. So I don't understand the concept that you're saying, you know, shrink the district, control the boundaries. It makes no sense. It's counterintuitive to everything else you're saying. I have the law that tells you how to go about this. It's highlighted, I'll give it to you. I promised you once before when I was speaking that I'm trying to say as close to the laws I can, and I usually do, but you can have these out, it's highlighted, so you don't have to look it up, you don't have to try to find the statute that governs this process, I just gave it to you. But think about what you're doing, and think about the creativity that went in, went into everybody in that room, and when we came out, we had a 75-25 split dedicated to infrastructure, which you need. Thanks.
Thank you. Are you walking up here?
Hi. My name is Chris Barnett. I have been a member of the DDA board for 13 years. Only person that served longer than me is Deb Burgess for 16. And I'm here tonight, I watch your meetings, I don't come much, but I'm here with my DDA hat on, and it's to say, I don't think frustration encapsulates my emotions. We have a strong DDA. I serve as the president-elect of the National Association of Regional Councils, the mothership of the SEMCOGS of America, and we are so lucky to have an award-winning DDA that pours resources into our community. It's disheartening to hear village council members today don't understand the value of that, frankly. And I'm going to speak very specifically to Mr. Lamb.
Please direct your comments.
I'm going to speak to the comments I heard tonight, where one of the council members, Mr. Lamb, said, "I defy anyone to contradict my facts." Well, first of all, the election in 2023 was 776 to 444, 42% turnout of, I couldn't quickly find the number of registered voters, but 42% turnout of the residents that live in the village, so the turnout by registered voters was much higher. That's a huge turnout for a year we didn't have a governor or a senator or a president on the ballot. The residents spoke. Facts and opinions are different, and the misinformation and disinformation campaign and the arrogance in which it's being led should be startling, and it should call for an ethics inquiry. When we raise our hand and take an oath of office, we swear to uphold the Constitution and tell the truth. And the history is deceptive. These are the notes I just pulled tonight, just some of the notes from the last four years since this has been going on. But in 20, we received a presentation in March 28, 2022, from a council member, Lamb, and six items on it, all six items were proven to be false. There were six items, all six were proven to be false. In March, we got another presentation. All the items were continued to be false. It's one thing to sit up there and quote MCL, Michigan Compiled Law, and say things, but when you do that and then you accidentally or purposely deceive the public, that is cause for great concern. This DDA has poured resources into the village that would not exist without it. I don't think everyone up there understands how a DDA works. To say that people are being selfish, the DDA is being selfish, is careless at best. Even tonight, things were taken off the board because they realized they couldn't do that. We've been tasked with things like the township is going to owe the village $10 million if the village becomes a city, patently false, over and over and over. When you sit up there at the podium, you're expected to tell the truth to people, you're expected to follow the law. So at the last meeting, when I watched and heard over and over and over how we don't have permits to do the DDA lumberyard project, false, we do. Meanwhile, my office has been tasked with complaints on 1730 South LePiro, a property owned by Mr. Lamb, where he is actively violating Eagle ordinances-
Please leave your comments.
And filling a wetland. So all I'm saying is, you take an oath to tell the truth to people, and when you purposely deceive them, I have lots and lots of facts and lots and lots of time, hundreds of hours, it's my foreman's-
Point of order, Your Honor. I will allow it, if other council members are allowed to talk about this DDA-
He's not on topic, Your Honor.
He is talking about the DDA.
He's not on topic, we're talking about the district amendment of the boundary.
And this-
He's required to stay on topic, he's required to talk to you.
I'll end my comments.
He is talking to me.
You want to violate the rules.
I won't talk anymore about that, it's all public knowledge, but I will just say this, this board voted unanimously to approve this plan in 2020.
Thank you.
In 2023, our residents voted unanimously-
Thank you, your four minutes are over.
Well, you can interrupt me, but thank you, thank you for your time.
No applause, please. We don't applaud speakers, thank you.
Hi, I'm Brian Winter of 120 South Broadway. I understand we're talking about the boundaries, and I just want to address the math as the boundaries currently stand. The way this agenda item was written, it says 500,000 is what the current tax capture is, I believe that was for 2025, and we're expecting that to double, to go up to about $1 million. We know that from that $1 million, we need to cover bond debt service of about 400,000. So on the surface, the way I read this and the way I believe it's written, says, hey, the village could stand to have a net gain of $600,000. That sounds fantastic, except what I'm not seeing in here is the $300,000 of spending that the DDA pays, things like DPW, police, utilities, that if the DDA is not paying for that, if we're still going to want to maintain the status quo of what we have going on in this community, well, then the village is going to need to absorb that expense as well. So really, then in my math, this, we subtract out that 300,000, it's really only a net gain to the village of about 300,000. But there's another problem, there's another thing missing from here, and that's the other 500,000 of tax capture from entities outside of our village. We're talking Orion Township, which our Orion Township manager is arguing in favor of. We're talking about OCC, we're talking about NODA. So as- So as I see this written, we're talking about trying to get a net gain to the village of 300,000, but yet we're going to have to give up another 500,000 to do that. That math does not make sense to me. Now, the million dollars, that number is going to go up as these developments continue to come into place. And I think this attorney here said it very well, which is, hey, let's get together. Let's talk about this. Instead of viewing this DDA as a liability, I would encourage this council to view the DDA as an asset. You have an asset that you can leverage to do great things for people both in the DDA district and outside. It's a math problem. And I'm confident if you guys come together with an open mind and you work with all the experts that we have at our disposal, this problem is just not that hard. I'm sorry. I think there's a lot of good people in this room and I'm just going to say I'm optimistic that those good people are going to figure this out and how to solve this. Thanks.
Thank you. No applause, please. No applause. Yes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dana Walker. I live in North Branch, LaPirro County. But I have the privilege of serving as the Director for the Michigan Downtown Association, a nonprofit organization that is proudly celebrating its 45th anniversary this year. The MDA is a membership-driven organization with over 230 members, mostly Downtown Development Authorities or Main Streets. As Director of the MDA, I am frequently asked to speak about best practices when it comes to Downtown Development Authorities. And without hesitation, one of the top examples I always share is the Lake Orion DDA. The Lake Orion DDA exemplifies what a DDA should do and does it exceptionally well. Let me provide some context. DDAs were created in 1975 by Michigan's Public Act 197, which authorizes.
She is talking about the merits of the DDA. And if you put this agenda item on this agenda, they are allowed to speak on it.
Your Honor, I'm calling a point of order. These people are not speaking about the district enlargement or diminishment.
You haven't let them finish.
They're doing a big rah rah. I don't need to hear all that.
If you put this on the agenda, you have to be prepared to hear opposing opinions.
No, Your Honor, I only have to talk about the agenda items that you have so poignantly pointed out to me over the last several months. If you can't keep these speakers on topic.
They are talking about the merits of the DDA district.
I call a point of order. Why don't you contact the village attorney right now and ask her if they're speaking on topic?
I'm going to allow her to.
That's why we used to have the village attorney sit here as the parliamentarian to decide whether they're going to speak on topic.
She can speak.
They can speak. I can go out to the bathrooms.
Yes, you may.
Because you're out of order.
You may.
And you can laugh all you want. I'm the elected official and you're just the peanuts in the gallery.
Oh.
You don't even live here. You live in North Branch.
Please, please continue.
Let me provide some context and facts. DDA is recreated in 1975 by Michigan's Public Act 197, which authorizes municipalities to establish a DDA when it is deemed in the public's best interest to halt property value deterioration and to promote economic growth. Since its inception, this legislation has empowered DDAs to use a tool called Tax Increment Financing, or TIF, to reinvest directly into their downtown districts, whatever that size is. TIF allows a DDA capture to increase in property tax revenue over a set baseline and then use those funds to make critical investments in infrastructure and redevelopment of blighted areas and job creation and events and promotions and keep our downtowns, your downtown, vibrant and relevant. Again, to Mr. Lamb's point of me talking about the boundaries, this is why I'm here. A DDA is not just a funding mechanism. It's a strategic authority dedicated to the revitalization and long-term management of a downtown district, no matter what the size. The intent behind PA 197 and then its amended version, PA 57 of 2018, is to allow for comprehensive management to support the local economy in a meaningful, sustainable way. Lake Orion is a textbook example of the intent in action.
Your Honor.
The Lake Orion DDA manages all of your downtown holistically.
I want to call the question. This woman is off-topic. I want to call the question.
We need a.
So the parliament, do I have a support to call the question?
My name is Dana Walker, not woman.
I'm not allowed to address you, ma'am. A parliamentarian, we have a motion and a second to call the question.
The question requires a two-thirds vote, so I'll take a roll call, please. Councilmember Lamb.
Yes, I want to have a meeting to discuss all this.
You're moving to call the question. When you call the question, it requires a two-thirds vote to call the question.
All right. Yes, I move to it. I would like to just have the question.
So your vote is yes.
Yes, my vote is yes. Please get this over with.
Councilmember Camperoni.
No.
President Rudd.
No.
Councilmember Dan Delitis.
No.
Councilmember Mosher.
Yes.
Pro Tem Ford.
No.
Councilmember Papacek.
No.
We have five to two. Sense. No. Please continue.
That was the call of question. I still have a point of order that they're not on topic.
And I have already said I'm overriding that.
Ask the parliament, you can't overrule it. You have to, as a parliamentarian, ask them if they are on topic to follow the question.
She has been addressing the village boundaries or the DDA boundaries, but you stepped out, so you didn't listen.
We want to hear what she says.
She will reclaim her time. Please continue.
Thank you. The DDA is not just a funding mechanism. It's a strategic authority dedicated to the revitalization and long-term management of downtown district. The intent behind PA 197 and its amended version of PA 57 of 2018 is to allow for comprehensive management. Your Lake Orion DDA manages your downtown holistically and that whole district. They engage in contracts. They coordinate infrastructure improvements and support new and existing businesses. We have heard tonight about the infrastructure that they are helping with. This is economic development at its finest. In 2024 alone, the DDA focused on long-term impact projects like the deconstruction survey and site work at the lumberyard at Payne Creek. And they didn't stop there. They have done and maintained the small stuff.
We do have to keep it towards the district, though, and not the accomplishments of the DDA.
If a DDA doesn't do this, then who will? So these actions demonstrate a commitment not just to development, but to stewardship. And I would like to really encourage everyone here, I love the idea of a co-meeting where village and the DDA can learn from each other and support one another and specifically use the MDA as a reference, use the MML, use the MEDC. Make sure you do look at that law because I think some of the questions here about redistricting, resizing, you're going to realize you're going to lose that baseline and you won't get it back. All that growth, you won't get it back. You won't capture that. You won't capture from the township and the other taxing jurisdictions if you shrink that. So you're going to lose money, to this gentleman's point here. It's a math problem that if you look at the numbers, just doesn't make sense.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
No applause, please.
My name is Matt Pfeifer. I live at 497 Bellevue Avenue. A lot of the comments that I've had in watching tonight's meeting have been covered by a lot of good people in the room. But I'm a lifelong resident here. The village is the best it's ever been. And I'm frustrated that we have a family on the council that has basically made it their mission to attack the DDA their whole time here. And so when we talk about resizing the district, it's been well documented and it wasn't part of the presentation in the last meeting that one of the council members made, that there's tax capture money that we will lose forever. And that's really important that new members understand. Shrinking the district is going to shrink the money that comes into this community. Our community is stronger than it's ever been. And when I hear a council person disparage the DDA and DDA people as selfish, a lot of these people are DDA people involved. I call myself a DDA person because I support what they do. They're volunteers that are doing everything they can to make this community better, yet they have to sit in or they have to be disparaged by the people that they've elected to represent them as being lazy or as being, I'm sorry, selfish. I think that's out of order. And so our community is better than it's ever been. And our village is what it is because of what the DDA has accomplished with the district as it is. It's been reaffirmed by vote, yet the attacks continue and the different angles of trying to find ways to stop the momentum. And I guarantee you that this project that's being done at the lumberyard will be the flagship project, not only for the village, for our community as a whole, but to see council members continually try to undermine that when people are putting their heart and soul into making it the better thing. Get on the other side of it and join in trying to help get this project to fruition. You took a $5 million bond that you all agreed on and committed to and now we want to get in the way of this project and make it more expensive, drag it out and not let it get done and start benefiting this community as it should. So don't disparage the people who put their time into this community. That is unacceptable. The disrespect, I mean, it's kind of embarrassing, some of the stuff that's happened tonight. You guys represent us. You've all been voted by me and fellow village members.
Your Honor, he's off-topic severely at this point and I don't believe any of his comments are germane to the argument on the table.
Point made. Thank you.
Thank you.
Matthew Gibb, 118 North Broadway, DDA Executive Director. You know, we live in times right now where things are sensitive, aren't they? That we take things personal and sometimes we should, sometimes we shouldn't. You know, this whole discussion about the size of the district, you know, really is just a misplaced one. I think, Mr. Dan Delitis, you've said it a number of times tonight. Mr. Papacek, I totally applaud you as a new council member. I don't mean to make this sound condescending at all, but it's hard to get up to speed quickly. And it looks like you're diving right in. You know, there's a lot of people here that wanted to speak to the benefit of the DDA and extol its virtues. And as to the question of the boundaries, I mean, it's really a question of, are we asking the right question? There is financial challenges that we have. The DDA, just to make sure the record's clear, and sometimes it gets hard. You get passionate about things and you say things and sometimes maybe they come out wrong or the numbers come out wrong. We engaged in a huge budget discussion last year. All of you remember that. We met. It was hard. It was emotional. It was challenging at times, but it was rewarding at times. We came up with a solution. It was the first step of working with the new chief and the DDA is contributing towards the budget. This has to do with the size of the district. It does have to do with the size of the district.
He's not off-topic. He's talking about the budget, now not the DDA district enlargement or diminishment.
I do know there's a tactic.
The budget is all a part of this agenda item.
Yeah. Madam Chair, just say, for every introduction, there should be an extension of time. It should be under Robert's rules. So, you know, we engaged in great things. Mr. Sanchez and the DDA engaged in a great opportunity to say, use the resources that are afforded by the district to do certain things. But so much more is happening. And so to say that it's selfish or lazy or whatever it might be is, you know, we're paying all the electric bills for the streetlights. That's not part of the agreements. We're putting up all the beautification and Mr. Sanchez is repairing bricks and I'm repairing fences and he's repairing wiring, all because of the size of the district. So it's a valuable question. I would encourage you, I know that two council members and they're here, you know, they don't like to look at people or be polite to people. That's fine. It's part of the American discourse. It's all good. But it's just the wrong question.
Your Honor, a point of order, having open criticism from the DDA's council members.
And council members criticize the public, calling them selfish and calling them peanuts.
Your Honor, you're out of order, too.
So.
You're supposed to be in charge of this meeting, not emotional.
And I'm trying to let the public speak.
Keep them on topic.
I am, he is on topic and talking about, you put budget numbers in this agenda item. He's allowed to talk about budget numbers. Please continue.
Personal comments from the audience are not appropriate. You can direct his comments to the chair, just as you told the earlier people. I know the rules. Teresa.
I would just indicate to the council that is paying attention, one, apologies to you. Apologies to you, Eric, for what you've joined. As it pertains to the question of the district, it's a substantial legal question. It's a substantial question about what we can do separately, as we have been doing, finding ways to collaborate together to utilize resources. The shrinking of the district would call into question the statutory amendments that allow opt-out jurisdictions to reconsider that. All of those things come back on the table. There are substantial legal questions that have. To call a special meeting for the sole purpose of discussing the boundaries of the district is a misplaced use of time. The time needs to be a direction of how we can collaborate together to create budget solutions. If we able to get out of the existing size of the districts, an ancillary uptick of $1 million a year, 750,000 per year, but remember, that has a base year set. Mr. McClary set, because of the size of the district, that additional money. It's not $750,000. That is substantially higher than that. So I would encourage you, I'm going to say one more sentence just because of the interruptions. I would just encourage you to stay focused on what we can do together, what the attitude of our community is regarding the greatness that we can be instead of this continual retroactive look at, well, maybe we'll win this way or undo it this way. It is counterproductive to the goals that you all have.
Thank you. Please remember, no applause. And if you do have comments that do not pertain to this agenda item, do remember that there will be a call to the public at the end of the agenda as well that members of the public are allowed to make comments that are not pertaining to this agenda item. Mr. Stevens.
Harry Stevens, 311 North Shore. As I think most people know, I am the one who initiated most of the activity on the TIF district as far as canceled. And I used the word poorly, district. It is not the district. The attempts were to cancel the TIF funding. I had no question with regard to the district. A point of, I'd like to suggest, and you're never going to believe it's coming from me, and I'm not sure it's legal, but what would happen if we included the entire village within the TIF district? I'm sure that Mr. Pfeifer and Mr. Gibb and many of the other people who would be donating additional money to this activity would object to it. But this would answer the question as far as the monies going into infrastructure and that. If the entire village was part of the district, then the collections of monies could be used in a 75-25 ratio. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, we have, oh, we have one more. I didn't see behind the chair.
Rosemary Ford, 225 North Broadway. Just in listening to these things, I'm going to reiterate some things that people have already mentioned. But in speaking of reducing the district, one thing that was mentioned or brought up was that Petoskey and Charlevois were areas where they were able to rework their boundaries. But if we're going to do this, we've got to compare communities apples to apples. You can't compare Petoskey and Charlevois to community like the Village of Lake Orion because they're resort towns. So they have large revenues coming in from people that have homes and cottages up there just for a season. So to me, that is something that can, we need to keep in mind when we're looking at other communities, communities of our size. It came to a vote. Peoples wanted it to come to a vote. It was agreed upon. It was voted. And as the comment was made, the voters have spoken, which they did. When we're talking the 75-25, I don't know if everyone here understands that, but when you're talking a percentage of the monies that the DDA collects, it was a year or two ago that they came to an agreement with the village. They sat down because the village and the village recognized they were bringing in a lot of money. We didn't have as much. And the DDA said, okay. They sat down, like they said, it was a long effort, but they worked at it. The 75% goes back to the village for infrastructure in the DDA district. What I liked about it is, okay, so you've got that to use for infrastructure in our DDA district, which is a large district. But then the other areas that aren't covered by the DDA district, that allows the monies that the village does have to put into those areas. So it's kind of like a win-win for. areas. So it's kind of like a win-win for everybody. When it's, a comment is made of how selfish of the DDA. How can you say they're selfish when they agreed to a 75-25 split? That just doesn't make sense to me. And then again, as Mr. Winter mentioned, we have to look that because of the downtown development, we receive outside monies. And these outside monies come from organizations that we pay into, albeit Oakland County, Orion Township, Oakland Community College, the taxes that we are paying into. We get a portion of them back that we get to keep and make good in our community. So I think we're very fortunate. So again, I'm reiterating things, but hopefully it clears it up to some people as to what some of these items are. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Hi, Elena Campbell, Cookies and Cream, 20 Front Street. My comments that I had written have changed a little bit because the agenda item has changed, and I want to make sure that I stand on point and speak to the agenda item. One of the things that I wanted to reference is when we were going through the ballot initiative a couple of years ago, the Save the Lake Orion DDA ballot initiative, I spent a lot of time educating people about what is a TIF. Many, many residents don't understand what that is and how it works. When you explain to them that what it does is it captures a portion of their taxes that would leave the community, leave the community, so that those dollars can stay here now to benefit us, their eyes were opened and they were completely in favor of making sure that we kept our downtown development authority, seeing that it is an economic development tool for our community. Anytime you can keep your tax dollars local, you want to do that because it benefits you as a resident and the whole community. It makes no sense to lose dollars to leave our community. Therefore, it makes no sense to shrink our district. We're just giving our money away. We're sending it somewhere else. And I also want to just mention, we did do, I do serve on the DDA board, we did an absolutely, as many others have said here tonight, unprecedented and unheard of thing, working with our village, knowing that there were challenges, and agreeing to give 75% of the new TIF dollars captured from the new developments to the village for infrastructure within the DDA district. That is unheard of. And we did that because we are good community partners. We care about our community and we want to work together. We want to be collaborators. We are all in this together. And a rising tide lifts all boats. Thank you.
All right. We have a motion on the floor, and the motion is to call a special meeting for the purpose of discussing the boundaries of the DDA district. Is that accurate?
Downtown district.
The downtown district. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed?
No.
No. Motion fails. Four to three. Item 10A, Proposal for Engineering Services at Water Park Basketball Court Replacement Project. Mr. McClary.
Your Honor, council is scheduled to consider approving the proposal from the village's consulting engineers, NOAC and FROSE, to provide design bidding and construction engineering services for the At Water Park Basketball Court Replacement Project for a junior high size basketball court. The village's 2025 through 2031 capital improvement plan identifies this project as a priority for the current fiscal year. The engineering services will include completion of a topographic survey of the site, preparation of construction design and bid specifications and contract documents, preparation and submission of soil erosion permit application documents to the Oakland County Water Resources Commissioner, construction, staking, and inspection services, and conducting wage rate interviews for Davis Bacon grant requirements, and processing pay requests for council approval as part of the CDPG compliance. I provided you with a copy of the engineer's proposal. Following council discussion on July 28, administration obtained cost estimates from the engineer for a high school, for a junior high school sized basketball court, high school basketball court and half court. I provided you with those cost estimates. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee discussed the options at its September meeting and is recommending the junior high court. The committee is requesting the additional funding necessary to construct the recommended court, including the proper engineering services. I'm happy to answer any questions council may have regarding this matter.
Thank you. Counsel. Mr. Lamb?
Can we have a pickleball court instead?
No.
I move to approve the, let me read the thing to you. To approve and accept the proposal from NOAC and FROSE dated July 23, 2025, to provide a design bidding and construction engineering services related to a junior high school sized At Water Park Basketball Replacement Project in the total lump sum of $11,100, to authorize the village mayor to execute all necessary documents related to this contract and to authorize the administration to proceed to solicit sealed competitive bids for the construction of the basketball court.
Support. Comments? Mr. Lamb?
I believe after all the beating up and down with this, that the engineer's fees have been reduced, and I believe that the understanding of the project is great, and I'm hopeful that the bids will produce a much lower cost than the $75,000. But I think we've done all we can to...
Other council comments?
Your Honor, I just want to note that with the junior high size basketball court, we had budgeted $40,000 for this project. We are estimating with engineering costs that it will be $83,200. Right now, all you're approving is the contract for the engineering services. But once we get bids in, depending on the prices, you will need to do a budget amendment to fully fund the costs.
Mr. Ford?
It's gone back and forth a little bit, and I want, just for my clarification, if I looked at it properly, the earlier talk about the basketball court and the recommendation from the Parks and Rec, the size is different there than it was for the engineering study. Is there...
It is.
When we say JV court, I want to know what, are we talking 47 by 50, or are we talking about 68 by 50? Because I'm seeing two different things.
The dimensions that were provided by the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee are not one of the three recommendations from the basketball court, so that needs to be reconciled. We will work with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, the engineers and staff, to clarify that and make sure that we are working out those details.
Thank you.
Any public comment? Seeing none, we have a motion and support. Do we need a roll call for that, since there's many? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Mosher?
Yes.
Pro Tem Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Papacek?
Yes.
President Rudd?
Yes.
Councilmember Dan Delitis?
Yes.
Councilmember Camperoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item 10B, Administrative Assistant Position. Mr. McClary.
Your Honor, pursuant to council's recent action to extend the operating hours of village hall, administration to five days per week, administration is requesting that council approve the creation of a part-time administrative assistant position and wage scale. Adopt a job description for the position and approve a budget amendment to cover the expense of the position. This was discussed during the special meeting that we had regarding this matter. The position is designed to be cross-functional, to allow the position to successfully perform all of the essential functions within the administrative offices. It's my intent to transition all full and part-time positions within the office, except the clerk, the clerk treasurer and deputy clerk treasurer, to cross-trained administrative assistant positions when we realize attrition in the existing positions. Once the new position is approved, administration will proceed to advertise, recruit, and fill the position. The current plan is to transition to a five-day village hall operating schedule commencing on Monday, December 1, 2025. I'm happy to answer any questions council may have.
Thank you. Mr. Delitis?
Okay, I'll go first. So the decision to go to five days from four days did not, it's with the same number of hours. We have the same number of employees, and those existing employees are going to work the same number of hours. So if you look at the total employee hours for the week, none of that changed, right? All we did was we changed it from working a four-day schedule to flexing so that we had some folks working these four days and another folks working these four days, and that's how we get the five days. So with that as an understanding, the questions I would ask would be, do we have, so I looked at the job description that you have there, do we have more mail as a result of spreading those hours over five days? Do we have more mail that needs to be delivered? Do we have more burials that need to be, that need to happen? Are we going to sell more park passes? Do we have more invoices to process or DPW work orders to process as a result of being in the office five days? I would liken this to, if I had a hole to dig in my backyard, and it takes 40 hours to dig that hole, and I was going to dig it on 10-hour days on four days, if I decided to do eight-hour days for five days, would I have to hire an assistant to do that? It seems to me that the workload is the same regardless of how many days we spread that work out over. So it confuses me why we have an additional workload that justifies adding a person. I also have to tell you that I'm a little bit disappointed that we would be coming forward with asking to spend money on an additional resource without even attempting to go to five days, and then coming back to council and showing where, you know, with data, with quantitative data, showing where we can no longer get the same amount of work done because we're spreading those same number of hours over five days instead of four days. I just can't make logical numbers sense out of that. So my suggestion would be that we get about moving to five days, and then let's see how that works. And if in another couple of months, we realize that we can't get the work done for some reason because we've spread those hours out of five days, then let's come back to council with some data that supports the need to add additional person. But the idea that we made a decision a couple of weeks ago, and we're going to, before we implement, ask for more resources and then not implement for another couple of months, I just find that unacceptable.
Well, I appreciate that, council member, but I think you have forgotten a large part of the discussion we had during that special meeting. It's not the same number of hours. It's an additional 10 hours of operation per week.
I don't understand how that works then, because when we looked at the math, it's the same number of hours.
It is not the same number of hours. We're now open five days per week, 10 hours per day. So, well, that's what the council has authorized to go to. So it's an additional 10 hours of workload per week.
It's an additional 10 hours of window open time.
We discuss at that time the need, I made it very clear, we would have to hire an additional part-time employee to fill that gap up to 20 hours per week. And that's because of rearranging the existing staff's work schedules, and with the requirement that some of our part-time employees have to work certain days of the week, it was going to require coverage by this new part-time position. We had those discussions. So this should not be any surprise.
It's not a surprise that you're bringing it forward. No, you're right. We did have those discussions, but I truly believe that we ought to try it at least and then come back with something quantitative, some kind of data that suggests that we need to add a person. I just, I don't understand that. It's, can't even try it until we add a person. That makes no sense. Thank you.
Mr. Lamb?
Darwin, thank you for spending the many, many hours with us in the little room talking about how we could make our village available to the residents five days a week. So as our caller discussions, I'm not in disagreement with Georgia by any means, but our discussions, we agreed that the village council determined that we would like the village hall to be open five days a week. Previous administration had talked us into four days a week. Council changed their opinion. So a lot of the employees work four days a week. They work like four tenths, okay? So they have contracts and stuff, and so it wasn't really fair to throw them back, to say, okay, all of a sudden, people, you're all working standard shift again. I mean, we are the government, so we're kind of inflexible. So we decided to staff the office. Darwin made it clear that we were going to need another part-time person because the rotating shafts, and now the four, Jim is explaining this to the people. So the four employees that are on the four tenths now have to alternate days with the other employees, so the office is staffed by at least two people at all times because of issues like using the lavatory and having safety. So we're going to take on a new person. I'm sure we can find something for him to do. The DDA could also hire them as a part-time flower basket item, but there's always room for another set of hands. I'm willing to pay the $16,000 to keep the offices open five days a week. And we'll work on how it, if it doesn't work out, we'll change it again.
Other council comments? Is there any motion that anyone would like to make?
I'll make a motion. I see four of them here. One at a time?
Yes.
Number one, to approve the creation of one part-time administrative assistant position for the village hall, administrative office is working up to 20 hours per week to provide necessary additional staffing support for the expanded village hall five-day operating hours.
We have a motion, we have support?
I'll support.
We have a motion and we have support. Any other council comments? Mr. Dan Delitis?
So we would never run our personal lives, or if we were running a business, we would never run it with an attitude of an extra set of hands would always be good, okay? We need to justify the need before we agree to spend the dollars. We all sit up here every two weeks and talk about not being frivolous with our taxpayer dollars. I would like to see something concrete that suggests we need another person.
Mr. Ford?
Well, we spent all that time in the meeting. This sounds like the discussion we had at the meeting, and I thought that was solved at the meeting. And that's why I think the motion is valid and the need is valid.
I would say, I, at the meeting, I voted no on expanding the hours to five days, partially I would say, at the meeting, I voted no on expanding the hours to five days, partially because of that discussion, partially because of how many people actually come in on some days and the need to service. So for that reason, I will likely be voting no on this, just because it's consistent with my thought that we don't need the extra day, because we don't have a rush of people coming on Fridays, and therefore, why would I vote to increase spending for something that I didn't necessarily think we needed? Any public comment? Mr. Stephen?
Having sat through that special meeting, and the debate was, should we be open at the counter at 7:00 AM in the morning? And during that meeting, I think it was kind of admitted that we have maybe five or six regular contacts at the counter during an eight-hour day, or 10-hour days as we experience right now. I think it'd be interesting, you know, how many contacts do we have between 7:00 AM and the normal starting time of the office? If we have none, or one, or two, does that justify having another person to do that? It's a question of what is going to be used between that proposed starting time of 7:00 and when the regular office would be starting up? So I think a little bit of a study about the utilization of the counter space, counter time from 7:00 until normal opening would be an interesting point.
Thank you. Any other public comment? We have a motion and support. Could we have a roll call for it?
Councilmember Camperoni?
Yes.
President Rudd?
No.
Councilmember Papacek?
No.
Pro Tem Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosher?
Yes.
Councilmember Dana Litas?
No.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Four to three, motion passes.
Thank you. Are there any follow-up motions to that one?
Motion number two, to approve the job description for the administrative assistant position as presented by the village manager.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any comments? Public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
Motion number three, to place administrative assistant position in the same job classification as office coordinator, account clerk, utility billing clerk with the pay range of $21.65 per hour minimum to $25.98 per hour maximum.
Support.
Motion and support. Council comments? Public comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
And motion number four, to amend the fiscal year 2025-26 budget to provide the supplemental appropriation of $16,781 to increase budget account number 101-260-702-000. General fund, general activities wages part-time from zero to $16,781, with the addition of a new part-time administrative assistant position.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Council comment? Public comment? All those in favor say aye. Oh wait, we have to, roll call, sorry, roll call.
President Rudd?
Yes.
Councilmember Camperoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Dana Litas?
No.
Councilmember Mosher?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Pro Tem Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Papacek?
Yes.
Six to one, motion carries.
Thank you. Item number 11 is called to the public. Again, same as before, anyone who wishes to speak shall be afforded an opportunity to do so. Remember, you are limited to four minutes. Please direct your comments to the chair. Is there anyone for call to the public?
Hello, Elena Campbell again, Cookies and Cream, 20 Front Street. I'm here to express my strong support of our downtown development authority. The DDA is the economic development engine for our community, responsible for countless projects that have increased property values, supported local businesses, and made Lake Orion a place people want to live, visit, and invest in. Over the years, the DDA has made smart, strategic decisions that have strengthened our downtown. They sold their office space at Shadbolt and Broadway, which became 51 North Brewing at the time, and is now Irish Tavern, bringing jobs and dollars to our downtown. Then the village made a smart decision and sold its offices, which became Lockhart's Barbecue at the time, and is now Sick Town Hall, another great example of turning government space into a thriving business that adds life, jobs, and tax revenue. The DDA also led the Streetscape Project, transforming... Do you want me to go to the other mic? Is it really in the... The Streetscape Project, transforming what was once a tired-looking downtown into the beautiful brick-paved district we enjoy today. That project inspired business owners to reinvest in their own buildings, sparking a wave of beautification and pride throughout the district. And now we're seeing the DDA's vision again with the lumberyard redevelopment, the largest project yet. When the community opposed a high-density development there, or possibly a, what do you call it? I can't remember the name of it now. Storage unit facility, thank you. The DDA stepped up, purchased the property, and is redeveloping it into something everyone can enjoy, with portions going back on the tax rolls as private businesses. It was an unprecedented move when our DDA pledged 75% of all new TIF revenue from future developments back to the village for infrastructure improvements. To my knowledge, like I said before, no other DDA has ever done that. It shows true partnership, fiscal responsibility, and a shared vision for Lake Orion's success. Did you know that for every dollar spent at a local business in our downtown, that is an investment in our entire community? For every dollar spent locally, about 60% stays local. It circulates and recirculates throughout our community, through our small businesses, schools, families. A thriving downtown brings in outside dollars and strengthens our tax base for everyone. My husband and I both grew up in towns that did not have DDAs or any economic development structure, and those communities have declined. Young people move away for opportunities elsewhere. What we have here in Lake Orion is special, and it's because of the leadership, investment, and foresight of our elected officials and our DDA, many of you who are serving here on this village council. And let's not forget that just two years ago, this was put on the ballot, and the people voted to keep the DDA. That's as democratic as it gets. So it's frustrating, and frankly ridiculous, that the DDA continues to face challenges that drain staff time and energy, time that could be spent on projects that move our downtown forward. Instead, these distractions cost us in attorney's fees, salaries, and stress, and that's not productive for anyone. I also have comments from Annalise Constantino, owner of Boutique Chic. On behalf of myself...
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Hi there, Sam Caruso, owner of Caruso Chiropractic, 25 Southfield Parish Street. So let's go back in time. I was very fortunate to come to Lake Orion as a young man. I had hair back then, in November 26th of 1990, 35 years ago. Anybody been here since 1990, since 1990 down to Lake Orion? How did it look back in 1990? Didn't look like it looks now. I mean, we're talking infrastructure development. Everything's improved tremendously since 1990, all because of leadership, DDA, and infrastructure that's happened over these years. I can't imagine what the difference in tax basis is from 1990 till now. I'm guessing it's a lot more. I know my taxes have increased a lot as a business owner in downtown. I know I'm a lowly, you know, peanut gallery, business owner in downtown Lake Orion, but I know that my lowly peanut gallery, business order, money goes to pay for taxes in this area. $15,000 a year, which is awesome, and I love it, and I'm grateful. Have a thriving, successful practice that I'm able to contribute to the community by paying my tax bases, by helping out with giving funding to the police department and helping people out. But I just know that the money that we've created and increased the value of my property value, I'm very excited about the value increase in my property value because of the fact that we have a thriving downtown district that gives back 75% of its money of increased revenues. That's a pretty exciting and a new way of giving back to the community. That's what the DDA's done. We got together with Mr. Lamb, myself, we were on that committee together, who formed the 75-25 split. All the money that comes in addition to the certain basis that we decided is going back to the village of Lake Orion to help infrastructure. To say that we are being creative and helpful is actually, is a smack in my face. It's ridiculous. We know that we're giving back as a community, as a DDA district, and just go back to 1990. It wasn't the same town as was now. People come to this community, they realize what a great community. When I bring friends to this community, they always say, "What a great, thriving community." And guess what? If you're not part of the Downtown District Authority, you still benefit from the downtown district, from the great restaurants, from the great businesses downtown, from the great shops of downtown, from the excitement downtown. Just because you're not part of the district doesn't mean we're not giving back to you as a non-district resident. Thank you for being on the board, for you guys, serving as a committee. We appreciate you guys in the council.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Bill Kokinas, president of the Orion Lighted Christmas Parade. I apologize I wasn't here. Did we get past for the parade? To have the parade? Okay. What I'd like to do is invite all of you. I can provide a truck for you guys to all be in the parade. It's never been done before. This is our 30th year. I'm inviting you guys all to be part of the Christmas parade. A lot of people in this town don't vote, they don't know who you guys are. It's a good chance to get out there and see the people. Thank you. Now, I'd like to talk about Bill Kokinas, DDA organizational committee member. I've been probably wasn't a DDA longer than anybody. I've been around here for 20, 24 years, okay? And we worked our tails off. But I will say this, I am asking for the council member who used the word selfish to apologize. We are not selfish. You don't see anybody's name in the paper making headlines saying, "I did this, I did that, and I take personal offense," because I never once have gone to the newspapers or gone to on TV and said, "I'm Bill Kokinas, and I did this for the DDA." It was always because of the DDA. And I hope I can say this for every member of the DDA and the volunteers that we're having, and the new volunteers we're trying to get. That kind of talk hurts us by trying to get volunteers to increase it, and I would really like that council member to apologize. Thank you.
No applause allowed, thank you.
I have just three issues, and none of them are DDA. One, looking at our agenda, and then looking at that which is suggested by Robert's Rules, they do not coincide. And I would suggest that we maybe want to adjust our agenda to be more similar to the Robert's Rules. Robert's Rules calls for a call to order, a roll call, approval of amendments, reports, unfinished business, new business, announcements, and adjourn. The segment we don't have is new business. The only way we get something new in is to sneak it in or talk to the manager to put it onto an agenda item, but I think it would be appropriate for us to have a subject of new business that a councilperson can bring up, not to have a resolution, but to have it as a subject so that homework can be done, to be handling it on the unfinished business at the next meeting. Point two, I don't recall that Parks and Recreation has a budget line item as such, where they have a revenue stream and an expenditure, expensive stream. I think that would be a good addition as Parks and Rec becomes more active. We have such things as the park fees and the boat docking fees that could be a revenue stream for the Parks group, and then likewise, they would have expenditures for the lifeguards and things like that, but bring them into a full line of accounting for budgetary purposes. The last item is, and it's on your page 73 in your program, and this is the sum of all budgetary items for the village. And this includes everything. And the revenue side is $14,209,000 and some change. Expenditures are $17,219,000 and some change. My experience in budgets are you try to balance those. In our case, we can go back and look into fund balance, or in our private situation, we go to savings accounts to balance out our budgets. But this has a deficit of over $3,100,000. That means that the village, through all of its aspects, are spending more than $3 million than we take in. You can't sustain an operation like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ford?
First off, I just would like to say thank you for allowing me to present what it is the, even though you already received copies of it, of what the Parks and Rec was looking at, and I feel to thank you, and I look forward to, as a committee, of working with the council on achieving some of those goals. And then I want to give a shout out to all those involved with the homecoming parade. Sunday was an absolutely gorgeous day. Our police were everywhere, and it was wonderful to see. But for all the volunteers and the schools, everybody that put an effort together, all the different organizations, to see those little kids marching through, just grinning from ear to ear because they were being seen, and they were just so doggone cute. So that type of thing is really appreciated, and that's another thing that makes this community so great. I also want to give a shout out to the DPW. Saturday morning, I was for, I was out for a walk and noticed that we had someone, and we don't know if it was youth or adults, but they took to smashing some pumpkins over the bridge into Paint Creek. And I reached out, and our wonderful director, Wes Sanchez, said, "Already on it, someone must have contacted him," and they sent people down there to clean it up. I know that that item is being looked at and being addressed in the future for having possible cameras, so we can hopefully prevent that in the future. But in the meantime, we've got a great police force and a great DPW, so I want to say thank you to both of them. We're fortunate to have them.
Thank you. Other, anyone else for public comment?
Just to clarify, Dana Walker again with Michigan Downtown Association. Whether you want to shrink or expand the DDA, there's a process, and it would affect your TIF capture, and so I do encourage for a co-meeting, if you have further questions, bring in an expert, like I mentioned, so they can go through the process and also show you the numbers, what is, what you might lose or might gain, and I suspect it'd be more of a loss, whether you expanded, like some gentleman mentioned, because you're starting that baseline then from zero, and you're not going to get that years and years of growth that you now have. You also have the opportunity of people opting out, like what we mentioned. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for call to public?
Hi, Janet Bloom, Assistant Director with the Lake Orion DDA. And I know there's been some, obviously, a lot of discourse tonight about the DDA, but some things I just definitely wanted to mention. Thank you, DPW, for taking care of that issue with some vandalism that we had. We do have some wonderful events coming up for the community. So we do have on Wednesday the Halloween extravaganza that's coming up that we certainly want to invite our community to take part in. We estimate about 1,200 kids that come through. I know with the parade, we launched that last year. Look forward to working with the police again with that, having over 200 people take advantage of that. So again, the hours for the Halloween extravaganza, we have over 40 businesses that are passing out candy, 5 to 8, if you want to participate in the parade. It will be at 5:30 that you meet at the Village Hall parking lot, and then we step off at 6:00. So again, just want to thank the downtown businesses that have stepped forward and will be passing out candy to all of our costume characters and kids from our downtown and servicing our community on that. servicing our community on that. Also want to mention that we have a retail event coming up. We want to get the registers ringing for our downtown businesses, so Witches Night on October 24th. And that runs from 5 to 10 p.m. Again, several businesses stepping forward to offer great discounts. And so, again, we encourage everybody to come out. That is an event that we run the trolley in between the two communities, and we partner up with Oxford with that. So, again, we encourage everybody to come out, wizards, warlocks, witches, everyone is invited. So, again, thank you so much. I just want to let everybody know that information. And for each of these events, we are asking for volunteers, so please reach out to our office if you would like to help support. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, again, Scott Farnell. I live on Bagley Street. And I just want to say, I used to come to Lake Orion when I was a young teenager. My aunt's family owned the Wagon Wheel Slone. Some of you may know it. What I remember, yeah, exactly. Yeah. And I was told as a teenager, "Don't go outside. You're probably going to get in trouble." In other words, it's a hole here. And when my wife said she wanted to move back to Lake Orion, I was like, "I don't know about that." She brought me down here, and I'm like, "Oh, my gosh, this is great." And not only did we start coming down here, but we committed our relationship at Children's Park. I engaged, we got engaged in the gazebo at Children's Park. And when she said she really wants to move to Lake Orion, I said, "Yeah, but we have to be downtown." And it's because of what the DDA has created in our village. And I say "our village," I mean, I've been here for three years. I don't know if that really, I know most of you have been here for much longer than that. And I love everything about what this village has been. It's like I've lived here forever, even though it's been very little, you know? I have a six-year-old little girl, and she gets to walk down to Children's Park almost every single day with my wife. And my wife started a business downtown. You know, we had a children's playroom for a while. It didn't really work out. But the point was, is that the downtown is a place that I want to be. The block that I live on, the greater majority of us, our new residents within the last five years, all of them wanted to be downtown. They wanted to be where we are, and they've chosen that. And I can't help but think that there are many more neighborhoods around the downtown village that thought the exact same thing. And what the DDA has done is magic. I guess that's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Tom Traurig, 112 West Elizabeth, also own the Village Trophy Shop. And to tie in for this gentleman's presentation, 1998, I bought the Village Trophy Shop from Fred and Jane Beckwith, and they were in beautiful downtown Ginjoville. In 2006, rent had become so expensive in Ginjoville, I was able to find refuge in the Village of Lake Orion. I had my choice of seven to eight units. I could rent from Mr. Sweet for $750 a month. I ended up at the old Soda Building. And in 2018, due to the success of the village and the DDA, I could no longer afford to operate business in the village, which is, it's a great success for the village, for me to have to move out because of the property values increasing and the desirability of people wanting to invest in downtown. So now I'm still in Orion Township out on M24, and of course, I still live in the village. But I just wanted to share that because it just shows that there was Village of Lake Orion. It was rundown. It was an easy place to get into, and they were desperately looking for businesses to come and try to rent for dirt cheap. So it's been a very good success. Keep up the good work.
Thank you. All right, with that, I will close the call to the public, moving on to council comments. Mr. Camperoni. Surprised you with that one, didn't I?
Yeah, you did.
I always started the, you know, insider outside.
I kept my mouth shut the whole night. This has probably been the most heated meeting I've ever been to. Got to say, I'm really disappointed. The amount of disrespect I witnessed tonight about made me sick. I mean, I think we could have meetings without all that kind of bullshit, that stuff. I really do. I think we could, and it's from both sides, you know, all six, 12 sides, whatever, how many sides it is. And it made me, it did, it made me sick. I think, I think everybody can, as adults, sit down and talk about this stuff without getting personal, I think. Correct me if I'm wrong. I don't know, I'm kind of new at this. But with that being said, I went to the fire department the other day, last week. They had the fire thing downtown. Took the great grandson down there. He had a ball squirting the little cars, and they showed off their new tools and stuff like that. It's amazing. Back in the day, the Jaws of Life, they had 20 feet of cables to haul and stuff. Now it's like a Ryobi gun battery, and the way, the equipment they have now is unbelievable. They tore a car apart in 30 seconds. But I guess that's about all I've got to say. You know, I've been here for 30 years, and I was raised in Oxford and been out here for 30, and it has changed a lot. And he talks about the wagon wheel. I remember Off Broadway, if anybody, how old is anybody here that remembers Off Broadway down there, or the Royal Bowling Alley? There's not, I guess I must be the oldest one here, huh? Yeah, so, and it has come a long ways. And, yeah, this used to be a biker town and stuff like that, and it was fun back then. It was a different kind of fun, for a different kind, for a different kind of people. But, yeah, it's come along. And the DDA has done some great stuff, and Lola has done great stuff. Everybody's done great stuff in this whole town, and I look forward to dying here. So, next.
Ms. Mosher.
Well, I want to always, I always thank everybody for coming, even though we don't always agree. I guess I had under, ruffled some feathers with my comment about the DDA being selfish, and maybe that wasn't the best choice of words. However, President Rudd made a comment at the last council meeting that she wasn't angry, she was passionate. And I'm passionate about spreading the wealth a little bit. So, I'm not going to apologize, but I'm going to say that that probably wasn't the best choice of words. In terms of the comment about family on the council, I really resent that comment. I have my own brain. I'm educated. I have a master's degree. I have my own opinion. I don't rely on my husband to tell me what to do. I have voted no, and I don't need to explain that to any of you. I am my own person, and I was elected because I'm my own person. So those kind of comments, I really don't appreciate. Just because we're married should have nothing to do with my opinion. And I don't believe I voted on the $5 million bond. I don't think I was one of the ones that said no, but it went through by a majority. So, I don't want to offend anybody. I'm just looking at the bigger picture, and looking at my taxes, and looking at my water, and looking at my sewer. And I don't want to get rid of the DDA. They're doing a great job. But I think there has to be a balance in terms of finances and how we look at this. So, I am sorry if I offended anybody, but, like I said, I have my own opinion, and my opinion is not necessarily what the family's opinion is. So the comments I heard, the little snickers, I would appreciate in the future, if you have those kind of opinions, not to voice them to other people, because it is offensive. You're thinking that I'm going to vote the way that my husband votes, and I find that offending. I have my own brain. So, thank you for listening, and I hope in the future that we can help the grownups and we can listen to each other's opinion without getting nasty. So, thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Lamb.
How many minutes do I get?
Want me to set the timer?
No, it'll be okay. Well, I'd like to thank all of you for coming, okay? I put that agenda item on there so you would all come. Okay, you didn't, I expected you to come. I've got to remind you that I've never criticized you DDA people, or the DDA Board, or the Township Supervisor, or the Township Trustee, ever. And I've never criticized the works of the DDA Board. I've merely been after a cut of the pie, okay? That's all. You guys want to make it personal and a lot of drama, that's fine. And I apologize to our visitors for interrupting them, but Robert's Rules of Order say you're supposed to stay on topic. I've been here five years, listening to the same stuff over and over again, and I'm okay with it, but I don't, I wanted to go to dinner, okay? I know your position. My position is, if I can get four council people to agree with me, I'm going to take a piece of the DDA pie back. So I made a point of showing you that all the lawyers have agreed, we can't dismantle the TIF. There's a lawyer's opinion there in the packet now. That's, so that's off the table. So we have huge growth in this community, huge. Unfortunately, none of the tax dollars from the huge growth are coming directly back to the village. And that means we can't take them to the rest of the community. I understand all of your arguments. I understand all of your numbers, and I dare say better than any of you. Okay? So that's what I'm saying. I say that kind of stuff because I really understand how you guys feel. So when I say the comment that you're a bunch of selfish peanuts, it would be an allegory, but meaning that you only come here when you're threatened, when your nuts are threatened to be taken away from you, or when someone wants to get a piece of your pie. Then you show up here en masse and extol your virtues. That's fine. That's legitimate politics. And that's what this is. This is politics. It's nothing about the community. I support this community fully. I put a lot of time and effort into this on your behalf. So it would be nice just to know that, you guys know that I don't dislike any of you, and I have no grudges against you. It's all about the money for the people. And on that topic, so quickly to the point. George, when we have these meetings, Teresa is the number one advocate and supporter of the DDA. So if we have a council meeting, the DDA is with us at all times, if you, okay? They're always represented. That's why the council president sits on the DDA Board. The Village Board is the superior board. We're the ones in charge of the money of the village. The DDA is a subordinate board that we fund. It's okay to ask them what they need, but I'm not looking to ask them for direction on where the money goes. They're not elected, that's not their job. What are the comments? Anybody picks on Nancy, I'm done with you, okay? That's ridiculous, and ridiculous childish crap to pick on Councilman Mosher, okay? Because she's my, it's not her fault, she's my husband. It's my fault for...
Husband.
It's not her fault that she's my wife, and I'm how I am. You guys, you figure it. And the last comment was, "I'm not sure that the Sick Pizza building contributes any tax revenues to the village at all, because it was a zero-revenue building at the time that it was sold." And then, that means that the tax capture, there's virtually no tax dollars from Sick Pizza paid to the village general fund or police fund whatsoever. You guys talk about the capture. So a lot of the capture from 1985, a lot of those buildings had a pre-existing value. Sick Pizza pays none. They don't pay a dime to the village for services, okay? So you just get your facts right. I know all the facts, and I have the assessment roll with me. With that, I'm really excited to see my new basketball court. I'm excited to see the steeple come down tomorrow. Darwin, is the steeple coming down tomorrow?
They're working on it. They started working on it today.
And I don't know if you, some people in the hazard zone over there, but that's a plaster ceiling, and it's, you know, been wanting to come down for a while. My dream has, my dream has been to get the feelings, the ceiling fixed.
They are taking it down in two sections. It's going to be wrapped so that it's preserved and stored at the DPW facility, in the hope that at some point it can be repurposed, either somehow reattached to this beautiful building, or repurposed as part of a gazebo, or something that will be meaningful to the community.
Yeah, the last thing I'm looking, you know, we're looking for community support, maybe some DDA support to, you know, help refurbish the interior of our historic building that's on the National Historic Register, right, Darwin?
It is.
It is, yes, it is. Thank you.
Ms. Bep Jackins.
Yeah, couple of comments. I heard the Homecoming Parade, it sounded like a blast, you know? You hear the drums and everything going. Normally, I just hear traffic along M24, so that was refreshing change. It sounded great. I also think it's great to have so many people here, right? And to hear the passion and energy that we all have for the great community. The things I don't like, to echo some of Alex's sentiment, are the divisive comments. And I think it goes both ways. It's, you know, I was disappointed to read newspaper articles, right, that seemed to have divisive sentiment about conflict with hope and hostility, you know? It's unfortunate where we are, I guess, that these things drive wedges instead of maybe fostering collaboration, right? So hopefully, we all get to a better place. That's what we want. I'd like to think that future commentary on both sides becomes one size, one side. It talks about shared goals, positive momentum, and not, you know, newspaper headlines are pitting the DDA against the village. That kind of stuff just doesn't work in my book. But I think we can all be a little better, myself included. So that's what I've got.
Thank you. Mr. Ford.
Couple of things. The Homecoming Parade was awesome, and not everybody sees the, all the work that goes into putting one of those on. It comes through our agenda stuff, and we approve it. But the police did a great job of putting up signings ahead of time, letting people know where they can park and where they can't, putting up cones the day of so that the parade route was open, because it didn't always happen that way. And then the number of reserves that were used to, they're at every important intersection. It's a great event, and we want to keep it great, not have any, anything go wrong with that. Looking at our police report, if I read it properly, there was 1,373 reserve police hours to date, spent through the year, and that, that's a credit to our police chief and our police that we, we have reserves that do a great job in helping out. I'd like to congratulate Debbie Burgess and Hank Grant on their reappointments of the DDA, and I think the consistency in leadership is very important. It's nice to have you both back on board. And I'd like to thank the people for the positive comments. There's a lot of positive people here, and I think that working together and keeping the positive approach to things is important. Downtown looks great, thanks to the DDA and all the decorations. I don't know that there's a better one, and I'm looking forward to the rest of the October plans that the DDA has. And Alex, I bowled at the Royal Bowling Alley. And as I recall, it had six lanes. I only bowled once though. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Dandalivas.
So I want to thank the DDA Board and the DDA representatives that were here today. And some, I don't remember who said it, but they're all... And some, I don't remember who said it, but they're all volunteers. In fact, you know, all of our boards and committees are volunteers and you really got to take your hats off to the folks that step up and want to help the community. Rosemary Ford with our Parks and Rec. I know working with the Parks and Rec as their, their council representative this year, I see the work that goes in to the, from the Parks and Rec committee and I really appreciate that. I also want to thank our township board of trustees, folks that are here today. Appreciate that. Appreciate the, the involvement and the wanting to be involved. The other comment that I want to make is, I know Matt Gibb made a, an offer to come into our, our council meetings at some frequency. It may not be every meeting, but I think that's a great idea and I think to get that, to have that firsthand what's going on with the DDA, I think can only, can only be a positive and I'm not sure how we, how we mechanically get that in the agenda, but I would certainly, I would certainly support that. I think it would be time well spent. Thanks.
Thank you. As far as Robert's Rules go and our council rules, our council rules state that a member of the public is allowed to comment on an item. It doesn't say specifically the, the motion. And there was an entire item that had a whole lot of information in it. And when there's an approved agenda, you can't just remove items from an approved agenda so they are valid to be commented on. So all the comments that were made germane to that whole item are allowed to be spoken. And that is why I allowed all those comments because there was information about finances. There was information about budgets. There was information regarding more than just the motion to have a special meeting. And our council rules state that on the item, you're allowed to participate and I'm not going to stifle public comment when there's a, a published agenda item and you all came in to speak to that item. There was a comment on water bills. If you haven't seen your water bills, they have gone up. Mine has too. We're all village residents, we are not exempt from that. You know, I'm constantly telling my family to take shorter showers because some of them like to take longer ones. I won't name who. But it's something that we're all in this together, right? It affects not just me, it affects not just you, it affects the entire community. And when I was at the MML convention a number of weeks ago, I talked to some smaller communities as well and they're struggling under some of the same burdens that we are. You know, we have 3,000 residents to spread those costs over and they're in a similar position. And many of those smaller communities also have higher water bills, which is both an encouragement, but also a shared suffering, right? That we were all kind of in this same position. But I encourage you, if you have questions on how those are calculated, why those have increased to the extent that they have, our village administration has those, those answers for you. You can look back in other council agendas and presentations. I couldn't cite them for you at this moment, but the village administration has a PowerPoint that they have, they presented when those water rates were voted on that I'm sure they'd be happy to send to you as well. I had the opportunity to attend the chamber, the Orionary Chamber of Commerce stated a community luncheon and that was just a fantastic, well-run event. So want to thank the chamber for the, the privilege to be there and to speak, but also for just a well-done event. They've been doing some fantastic work and it's been a joy to even attend ribbon-cutting ceremonies for all the new businesses in town that, yeah, that's always a joy. And I think those are all my comments for today. So with that, oh, wait, I haven't tossed it over yet. To Mr. Dandalais is, he mentioned the willingness to have the DDA present something, you know, on the agenda. I would be totally open to that as well, as well as to talking to the DDA about having the village manager just present what's going on in the village at a DDA meeting as well. So having that shared collab and cross-collaboration between the village council and the DDA board. So that, village manager comments, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Counsel, you've received the manager's report for tonight. Just a few items real quick. Attorney services solicitation. We did publish the advertisement for proposals for municipal legal services. The deadline for submitting proposals is October 22nd and the proposals will be provided to council at your October 27th regular meeting. A total of 225 companies were notified of the request for qualifications. 28 firms downloaded the documents and 16 of those firms are Michigan firms. So we're hoping for a number of responsive proposals. I will be recommending at your October 27th meeting that the council establish an ad hoc committee comprising three council members, the village manager and the chief of police to review the proposals, interview finalists and make a recommendation to council on selection of a legal firm. Village Hall steeple removal and roof repairs, the work has begun on that project. And as I noted, the steeple will be removed, wrapped and stored at the DPW facility. We have found that the existing pavilion here in front of Village Hall is in bad shape and needs to be removed. The contractor offered, since they've got their equipment here to remove that for us, so don't be surprised that that pavilion will be coming down. It is a safety hazard. Capital improvement projects, we talked about that at some length tonight. So prepare yourselves, counsel, because we will be getting, we will be beginning discussion on capital improvement projects at your, starting at your October 27th meeting. It will involve several meetings of discussions to discuss the capital improvement items that are in the CIP that we are, have programmed for the current fiscal year. So we need to discuss those, the funding and start the process. If they involve special assessment processes, we need to start that. We may need to prepare bid specifications and bid out those projects over the winter months so that we get the best contract prices we can so that we can start on those projects in the spring and early summer months this upcoming year. In reference to questions about the reasons for the water and sewer rate increases, I would encourage residents to please contact our DPW director, Wes Sanchez. You can contact him at the phone number 248-693-8391, extension 106, to talk to him. He is our main point of contact. He prepares the information that goes into the rate models and he's just a wealth of information as far as explaining why we had to increase rates this year. Or you can reach out to him also by email at wsanchez@lakeorion.org. And counsel, I provided you with a list of important upcoming dates for your information. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
We have a motion and support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, meeting adjourned.